I'm sorry, this time I'll call the meeting order for the month of June. And at this time, I ask that you stand and Chairman Langley, I mean, he is Vice Chairman. Langley will do the invocation and Commissioner Walker will do the pledge.
Let us pray. In turn about our Father, we are grateful and thankful for the opportunity to assemble together one more time to do the business of your people. Touch our hearts and minds concerning what is best for your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
At this time, I ask that if you have a phone with you, please put it in vibrate
or turn it off completely. The next item is the Conflict of Interest Disclosure Statement. Is there a Commissioner that would like to disclose a potential conflict? If not, we'll move to item number D, the Approval of the Agenda.
So move.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. We're down to the public hearing on the budget. And at this time, I'll turn it over to our Catty Manager, Brian Alligood.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. You have at your desk the final manager's message. You also have a longevity draft proposal. And then you have the budget ordinance from based on where we ended at the last budget workshop. So I'm going to start on the manager's revised budget message. As you're aware, when I present to you the manager's recommended budget, it includes a message that talks about changes and large expenditures and all the ins and outs of the budget. What we do is we bring back to you after you have your sessions, what those revisions to the recommended budget were. So as you recall, the budget was presented, the recommended budget was presented on May 17th, and then budget workshops were held on the 20th, May 20th, the 25th, the 27th, and again on June the 1st. You have a public hearing tonight on the budget, and the document in front of you reflects the adjustments that were made to the manager's recommended budget during your workshops. As you recall, when the budget was presented, it's the format in which it is presented is a continuation budget, which essentially continues the operations that you have in place this year into the new year unless there were changes that you asked us to make at the planning session. And then, in addition to that continuation budget, we provide for you what we call service expansions or decision packages. And those are anything that is new or different to the budget. So if there's an expansion, if there was a contraction of services, if there's something new or different, and that includes if there's an outside agency that's requesting additional funding from what they got last year, or if there's a new agency requesting funding. So those are things that are put together in what we call the expansion budget or decision packages. You look at, as we go through the budget session, typically that we devote a night to service expansions where we have folks come in and speak about them. You have an opportunity to answer questions. Obviously, the budget is the Board's way of getting done what it wants to get done for its constituents. So when we present that to you, we give you what it takes to continue your existing services, and then you make the decisions about whether you want to change, add, subtract, or do those things. So on the first page of this document, that is the revised manager's budget, you'll see, and I'll start through the expansion on the general fund side. The Board agreed to add $6,000. That's a recurring cost for cooperative extension program support. There's longevity that the Board approved. That's $195,000. There was an approval of a 1% cost of living for all general government employees. We'll also talk about the water fund and the solid waste fund. That was 218, 271. There was a reclassification of a maintenance position that was at no cost. There was about a $6,000 difference, but that was going to be made up in the budget. So the Board approved that at no cost. There was an addition of five sheriff's deputies to the budget, and that was a total of $275,000. There was an addition of a DSS supervisor three position at $84,336. And then if you go up to the revenue side, you'll see there's an offset because the state reimburses half of that cost for personnel at DSS. So there's an offset in the revenue side of $42,168. There was a cost of living adjustment for the BHM library system of 2721. There was a one-time appropriation to the city dive team for diving helmets, and that was at half of what they requested. They requested 25. You appropriated or you proposed $12,500. There was an economic development personnel change where the director asked that a position that he had be reclassified. You will see in that it shows it's a $13,309 increase for that position. However, there is a $14,250 offset for that in that he recommended and the Board accepted doing away with the NCE East contract that we have. There was a switch at no cost where you moved the sheriff's office vehicles for this upcoming year into radio funding for the sheriff's office. So that shows zero. You essentially took the $200,000 that you had for vehicles, moved them to radios, and that'll get moved in the budget to the equipment line item instead of a vehicle line item. You removed the proposed county storage building at a half a million dollars from the budget. There was an additional $76,404 for the USDA loan. You'll recall that when we talked to you about that, that bumped it just a little bit because of the way we refinanced it, but you're saving a tremendous amount over the life of the loan. You reduced, the DSS had a reduction in its contract services of $10,000. And then you reduced contingency. We had contingency in the budget around $400,000. You reduced that to $213,000. So that took away $242,042. At the top, you'll also see on the revenue side where you took out $450,000 that we had in the budget for your commitment to the community college for their boat building program, to build a building. The Board voted to pull that from fund balance and not pull it directly out of the budget in a continuing manner. And with that under the general fund, under those numbers, you will add $374,909 back to fund balance. On the second page, you'll see the water fund. There are water employees that are paid from the water fund. It is an enterprise fund, so they are not funded with general tax dollars. So you'll see there, there's a 1% cost of living, which matches what you did for general fund employees. That's $14,424. The longevity piece is $20,260. And then you approved a work order system that integrates into our existing financial package for water that was $25,000 one-time funding. That is offset by an increase in use of fund balance under the solid waste fund, although we designate two part-time folks. Part of their time is allocated to the, they are general fund employees, but part of their time is allocated to the solid waste fund. So you add up the 1% cost of living, that's $411. The longevity was $680. There was a one-time appropriation of $50,000 to do engineering planning on potential mega collection sites, one on each side of the county, one on each side of the river that the Board's been talking about. And then $167,676 for Phase 1 of collection site improvements, where we're going to go in and make some safety improvements and some other improvements that were needed at those collection sites. So in that document, you will see the changes that were made to the manager's recommended budget that the Board did during their budget deliberations. If you want me to, I'm happy to go over the longevity piece. We presented a longevity proposal. The Board adjusted that, gave us some new criteria to work from. We did that. It's based on the state model, but it does, it is a beginning program as of July 1. It does include a five-year look back for eligible employees, and it moves forward on five-year intervals. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about that. I know that once we got that information from the Board at the last meeting, we made some adjustments to get to where the Board wanted to be, and I sent this to you. But I am happy to go over it in detail if you want to. I know there were some questions and we had some clarifications. Are there any questions about it?
Does anyone have any questions? I think the last copy that you sent was pretty well self-explanatory, but if there's a question...
Well, you know, the $50,000 solid waste mega collection sites, can't that come out of some of this COVID funding that we're getting?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, it can't. The only thing that's allowed out of infrastructure is water and sewer. There is some stormwater that's allowed. The only way you would be able to use, actually, you can't use it for enterprise funds, for revenue loss. The only way you would be able to use some of that money is under what they call the general revenue loss. So if Beaufort County had lost money due to COVID, which we didn't, but if you would have, you could have taken that offset and used that money for any general fund obligation you had. But they do not allow you to use it for water or any enterprise funds because essentially, I guess what they said was, you can raise rates on those. And that's the only place we actually lost a little bit of funding was on the water side, where the, remember, the Governor said you can't go charge cutoff fees and those kind of things.
Well, insofar as developing those mega sites and that $9 million that we're getting, why can't we make an application? And if we can't do it, let them reject us?
They sent out guidelines, Treasury sent out guidelines that said, this is what you can use it for. I don't know that there's an appeal process for that. We're bound by what they say. What we don't want to do is, I don't know how you would do that, to send that to Treasury and expect them to answer that. We've gotten all our, I mean, you've seen the rule, the final interim rule. There'll be these comments that are going up to them. But they've been pretty clear that it's water, sewer, broadband, and stormwater are the infrastructure pieces that it's allowing for.
Ms. Manager, talking about water, now, we're talking about water quality, right?
You're talking, actually, the way they defined it was anything that was eligible under federal water grant programs or state revolving programs that they're involved in. That's essentially how they looked at it, to say whether that was eligible or not. So if you were eligible to receive money from a grant from the state or the feds under those existing water programs, you could use the ARP money to do that.
But we take our, we get our water from the Castle Hain, right?
We do.
Water quality is important.
It is.
Being able to have mega sites with certain provisions where we would be able to recycle and keep waste from finding its way into ditches and other places here and beyond, that increases the water quality, and which eventually gets into the pipes and gets to the homes.
I think you'd have a tough time making that argument to the folks at Treasury.
It's still about water quality, because they make that argument in reverse, do they not, Hood?
I've done follow-up, but I presume they do.
Yeah. Talking about the EPA.
Yeah.
Ryan, Ryan, I've...
Any questions on the...
I've sat in on two conference calls as it relates to money and what it can be spent on, and it's pretty clear. It's all about the infrastructure, and it has to relate well. And if you get outside of the infrastructure, it's got to be pretty much related to COVID-19.
Yes, sir. So I don't mean if I could draw you back...
...related to COVID-19. That's infrastructure. That's pretty clear. That's pretty clear.
So our garbage collection sites?
Yeah, that's infrastructure.
They do say infrastructure in what I've read, then they define these specific things, but they do not ever say that you are limited to just this.
There's never been any discussion about an appeal process. Let's get back to the budget. But they do give you a place, we are in the budget, Mr. Chairman. They do give you a place that you can call and query. Do not they tell you at the end of that thing, if you have questions, you can blah, blah, blah?
You can. You can ask those questions.
Well, I'm just saying, let's ask the questions.
Happy to do that.
I mean, let's ask them about developing the mega site for trash. That certainly has to do with public health and water quality.
It does, but in their definitions, they say water, sewer, broadband are the three pieces. They did allow for stormwater, but they did not allow for anything else. We can certainly ask the question, but I know, I've been on calls where that question has been raised. I don't know that they've gotten into the FAQs yet, and I'll go back and look at the FAQs and see, because they're issuing rolling guidance on that as we go. No, happy to do that, though. Any questions on the draft?
Four or eight.
Okay. So then I'll take you to the third document. I'll take you to the third document that you have in front of you, and that is the draft budget ordinance. This is the ordinance that the Board adopts relating to the budget. And I know that the Board has said there may be some changes to this later tonight. So we have provided you the budget ordinance as we understand it from the last meeting. So if there are changes tonight, then we would update, we would need time to update the budget ordinance as well as the manager's message, because we provide those together when we publish the final document. We could, we have a spreadsheet, and we can certainly do that tonight if you give us some time. I don't know how many changes you're planning on making. But this is the budget ordinance. The total amount of the general fund budget is $62,939,626. Obviously, the budget begins July 1 and runs through June 30. You'll see how it is broken down amongst the functional areas, general government, human services, community services, education, public safety, debt service, transfers, and contingency. In Section 2, you'll see that the budget ordinance is drafted exactly the way it was last year, when you put additional restrictions, which you are allowed to do, on the sheriff's office and how they allocate their funds. So their funds specifically have been allocated as listed under personnel salaries and benefits, operating expenditures, and capital expenditures. Then in Section 3, you'll see the full-time, authorized full-time equivalent positions for '21, '22 that are proposed. Take you back to fiscal year 2021. We started that year with 382 FTEs. During the year, we had four chore workers who retired or left, and DSS's policy on that has been when they leave or retire, we do away with that FTE and we contract that. It helps us to do that. So there were four positions that are now contracted. The Health Department added two positions. Those positions came to you during the budget year, and you approved those. And then at the end of the fiscal year, there were 13 SROs that were taken out of the budget. So starting this fiscal year, we were at 367. You'll see in the budget, this shows 373. That is made up of the 367 that you started with at the beginning of this proposed budget. You have proposed, there are five additional deputies to be added in the service expansion, and one DSS supervisor. So those are your six, and that takes you to 373. And then, as you go through the budget ordinance, it lays out how the taxes are laid out and looks at your fire tax, your EMS taxes, and how all those are laid out. So that is essentially, our budget ordinance pretty much stays consistent through the years, and so we provide you that same document. I'm happy to answer any questions the Board may have, or let you open your public hearing to take public comments.
Everybody good?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This time, I need a motion to go into the public hearing on the budget. Second. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. The first speaker we have is Archie Griffin. Archie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your time tonight and allowing me to speak to you tonight. You have a copy of my speech in front of you. And I'd also like to point out that I have our Chairman for the Soil and Water Board here with us tonight, Mr. James Allen. My name is Archie Griffin, and I own and operate Griffin Farms just outside of Washington, North Carolina with my mother and father. I come to you before you tonight not only as a concerned farmer, business and landowner, and voice for the agriculture industry, but as a publicly elected supervisor for the Beaufort County Soil and Water Conservation District. Some of you may be aware of this Conservation Board, but you may not be aware of its services and what we offer county residents and landowners, nor the impact that it has on the county. Mission of the Beaufort County Soil and Water Conservation District is to promote the wise use and management of the natural resources within its boundaries by providing dedicated leadership, technical excellence, and education reform to the citizens of Beaufort County. While trapping beavers and removing debris from our streams and tributaries is what we are most commonly known for, our responsibilities are far more reaching. Through a joint effort with the USDA Natural Resources Commission or Conservation Service, we are able to provide county residents and landowners consultative assistance, technical and financial assistance, technical assistance to units of government, as well as cost share and educational programs. I'll also point out, we are in charge of lagoon monitoring for our water quality. According to cost-benefit analysis that had been conducted over the years, in 2009, for every dollar that county appropriations from Beaufort County to the Beaufort County Soil and Water Conservation District, $4.82 was received from local, state, federal, other resources. In 2012, this number rose to $5.86. The most recent, per the most recent cost-benefit analysis conducted in 2017, that number rose to $7.40. Some quick math shows you that is roughly a 30 to 35 cent increase every year in money received. Judging from the early numbers, our county is expected to see a significant rise in funds received from local, state, and federal sources for assistance and programs for county residents and landowners. Meaning for every dollar of county appropriations to the Beaufort County Soil and Water Conservation District, the county would receive well in excess of $8 in return. I come before you tonight to request an additional reoccurring $3,000 for the Beaufort County Conservation District to be distributed evenly to the salaries of our two full-time employees. I would not stand here before you asking for this increase if I did not believe it was justly warranted. Since 2002, our technical assistance position has been filled and vacated a total of five times. Three of these have occurred since 2016, with the most recent position being filled in 2019. Since the position was filled, our technical assistants and office manager have successfully cleared a four-year backlog of work. If you do the math, this is roughly a 60% turnover rate since 2016. Due to various restrictions, we are unable to offer our employees a pay increase. Otherwise, we would have already done so ourselves. Over the years, I have had the privilege to be a member of the Beaufort County Economic Development Board and board member of the Board of Trustees for Beaufort County Community College. During this time, I have heard and witnessed countless times how hard it is not only to attract and keep quality employees, but attract and keep younger employees and individuals in the county due to tough competition that we face from neighboring counties that often can offer more services and larger salaries. I ask you all Commissioners to grant these $3,000 in additional funds for the salaries for our two employees to ensure that we keep two highly-trained employees right here in Beaufort County, and to ensure that our constituents, that your constituents and landowners are not faced with a potential backlog in work due to future predicaments that could have been avoided.
Thank you. Thank you. Archie was the only one that signed up. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak specifically on the budget? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Well, there's one person.
I, that was under the public comment? Was that a... This is on the budget. Would you, okay. All right. We have a motion on second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. All right. Now we're down to item number F, public comments. And the first one, Tandy?
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Tandy Dunn. I'm a resident of Beaufort County. On May 1, my grandson Logan was involved in a serious ATV accident. He is currently at the Cincinnati Children's Hospital with traumatic brain injury. Nothing can describe the anguish and heartbreak I felt when my daughter called crying and upset with him in Ohio and us in North Carolina. Parents, please make your children wear a helmet when riding bikes, ATVs, and motorcycles. On a side note, he's doing better every day, and we hope to get him home by the end of the month. On May 4, my other daughter called me distraught and crying also. Seems that her, her husband, my nephew, and my brother-in-law were all fired from the sheriff's office that day. I realize the sheriff is a constitutional office and that he can fire you at any time. But four family members at one time? What did they do? As far as we can figure out, it was because they were kin to me, or maybe because Scott Hammond is running for sheriff and other family members are helping them get elected. We don't know, and he won't say. To the current members of the department, we support you, but realize that he can fire you today also. Understand that some of you had to do things that he told you to do, but that you did not like or agree with. Watch your back. During the budget process, Charlie Rose was asked about a report, and he said that the person that did that report isn't doing it anymore. It's because it's my daughter Casey who he fired that did that report. Ernie says he's a Christian man. Is it Christian like to fire four family members? People who have been devoted employees, who had no disciplinary actions, and who up to that point were supporting him? And he cannot say it was caused of the budget because that has not been finalized yet. He's still getting the money for those positions. I call BS, and Ernie, anytime you want to, you can bust in here in the back door like you did as the Coolie Man before and defend your actions. Thank you.
Earl?
My name is Earl Carney, and I am a resident of Beaufort County. And I'm here this afternoon to ask you to look at the possibility of installing at each one of our waste management facilities a drop box that people, our citizens, can put their old flags in. Two or three years ago, I replaced my flag. I had no idea where I could take this thing. I knew I could burn it myself, but I didn't want to be seen out in the front yard burning the flag. A lot of people wouldn't understand that. So I thought perhaps we could put drop boxes at each one of our waste management facilities. Not only will that solve that problem, but we've got a lot of people fly these flags every day. It would give them, it would create an awareness in those people that are going by just to drop off their trash. A lot of people aren't aware that we have areas in the county where you can drop off a flag. Mr. Waters sent me an email delineating those drop places now, but nobody is aware of it. If you put these boxes out there like we used to have for our postal service, put an American flag logo on it, and then describe what they're there for, I think it would not only create an awareness, but it would be a useful tool. And it would create a, people to reflect on, what is this flag doing here? And before I came up here, I was thinking about the Marines, and, you know, we had Flag Day recently, June 6, 1944. A lot of people don't know what day that, that's the day after the 5th for most people today. But on Suribachi, anybody know what Mount Suribachi was?
Yujima.
Yujima. Thousands of Marines died there to raise one flag. So if we can put these drop boxes out there where people have an opportunity to dispose of their old flags, I think it would be a worthwhile endeavor on your part, and it would certainly make my heart feel good. And I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next one, Dawn.
I actually combined my general comments and about the American plan as well. So are you going to do those together, or you want me to split them apart?
You've got three minutes. If you can do it in three minutes...
I can do it in three minutes.
Otherwise, we'll let you go over into the, split it up.
Okay.
If you do it in three minutes, that's fine.
As long as we don't count what we just spin, I'm good.
Wait a minute, now, start again. Let me cancel this one.
Say hello. My name is Dawn Brinson-Slan. I'm a resident of Beaufort County, a small business owner and taxpayer. I have attended a portion of the budget meetings held over the past month to review and approve the budget for Beaufort County. For the amount of paper, the number of individuals present in those meetings to provide additional input in this budget, and the time spent by those that support this, I have expected the review to have included the budget for more than Beaufort County. to have included the budget for more than Beaufort County. I commend each and every person that stood before you during those meetings to answer questions and provide information for that review. I'm sure most, if not all, were here for those meetings in addition to the numerous hours and meetings they had to attend prior to your review to pull together their budget information together. As a taxpayer in this county, I appreciate their hard work, and I'm thankful for their efforts. So while there have been five meetings held about this budget and another scheduled in addition to tonight's meeting, I ask each of you to reconsider this process and review your remitting these budgets. I'm also asking that you consider the professionals that work within the Beaufort County budget and trust their ability to monitor and utilize the money approved. As an outsider looking in, this process feels more onerous than a teenager asking for gas money that he earned from a bank account managed by a monthly parent. I have reviewed the process using a similar-sized county and believe that there may be an opportunity for improvement. Until there is a reason to scrutinize the details of every line, would you consider asking high-level questions where needed, relying on the talent you have in place with the individuals that pull this information together, and focusing your attention on the people of Beaufort County? I am just about to complete the leadership Beaufort class offered by the Washington Chamber of Commerce. As a result of participating in this class, I have had the opportunity to see across most of the agencies and groups that make up the Beaufort County government and services, all of which have stepped through the budget process. The numerous services and programs in this county are a true benefit, and I'm hopeful as a taxpayer that these programs remain in place and funded as they absolutely support the vision and growth for our county. During the most recent leadership Beaufort session on Beaufort County education, the school superintendent shared the tireless efforts of everyone on his team to pull together over the last year to help the students of Beaufort County make it through the remainder of the nineteen-twenty school year and the twenty-twenty-one school year during the pandemic. When the educational teams for the Beaufort County schools began to implement mandatory changes to remote learning, they learned that more than one thousand children in the county had no access to internet. They quickly worked to implement a short-term solution so that students would not lag in their learning because of the gaping technology hole in our county. While this solution may work in the short term for the school year, the longer-term solution requires that broadband be placed in those parts of the county where it doesn't exist today, and it must be sustainable. This board has the perfect opportunity to assist with meeting that need using the funds offered by the American Rescue Plan Act. As you review this ongoing issue and hold the additional meetings in locations across the county, please remember that not every household can afford a computer, but most do have smartphones and use them like most would a computer. While I understand this may not be an important matter to those that utilize older technologies such as flip phones, landlines, and fax machines, it's a very important matter to the taxpayers of Beaufort County and to the more than one thousand children that did not have what they needed for their education. Access to broadband and decent phone services is a necessity for their learning and growth and the success of Beaufort County. I would like to ask you to consider spending more time reviewing the true needs of Beaufort County and less time examining the inconsequential line items of the county budget. Thank you.
Patricia Gerson. It seems like only yesterday we were talking about taxes. I understand that taxes are a necessary evil, but do we have to be this evil? I understand that there was a motion made by Commissioner Deathridge during the budget workshop to lower our taxes, three cents on the hundred dollars. Four county commissioners voted against lowering your taxes. Shame on you. We are at an unprecedented time in history, but there is an attempt to destroy our economy. There are businesses closing. There are people losing income. And I keep hearing that we are lucky because people are paying their taxes. Do we have a choice? Because if you don't pay your taxes, they'll take your home, and they'll take your business. We don't have a choice. We have to pay our taxes. Shame on you if you voted to not lower our taxes. I also understand, in addition to the private sector losing their businesses and losing their income, that we're granting an increase in the salary of government employees. There are no private sector businesses that are giving their employees raises. Most people are not getting raises this year, and they didn't get raises last year, and they're not going to get raises next year. Why are you giving government employees raises? We have a flat budget. We have an expansion budget, and my understanding is we're increasing the budget by nine hundred thousand dollars. Am I reading that correctly? That was in the newspaper, if you can understand the Beaufort County newspaper. I guess as a concerned citizen and a private sector, member of the private sector, we have to get this budget under control. We have to get spending under control. If we're losing businesses and we're losing population, why are we offering increased expenses to the people that pay taxes? Are we raising taxes? No, but we're taking money out of the fund balance, which eventually will have to be paid back. I'm asking the county commissioners to think about what it is to work in the private sector, to think about what it is when you're losing your business and possibly being faced with losing your property and your home because you lost a business. As of four weeks ago, one hundred and ten thousand restaurants in the United States closed and will not reopen. How many people do those restaurants employ? We have businesses in Beaufort County that the doors are shut, and they don't know when they're going to open again because they can't find people to work. I'm asking the county commissioners to be good stewards of my money and your money. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I want to open it up. We didn't have anybody to sign up for the American Rescue Plan Act. Suggestions? Is there anyone? Did you complete yours earlier? Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to that? If not, I'd like to remind the public at this time, we have three public meetings set up. All of these start at six. All of them are at volunteer fire departments. The first one is June the fifteenth. That's going to be at Blunts Creek. June the twenty-second, that'll be at Old Ford. And June the twenty-eighth will be at Pyentown. And all of these are at volunteer fire departments. And once again, I'll remind you that we did not have these inside of any of the municipalities because all seven of the municipalities have their own money flowing directly to them. And I'm assuming they're going to have something very similar. You say they're not? Okay. All right. We're down to item H, legislative updates from elected officials, and I do not see our representative or senator in the room. Next item is items for consent. Now, before I entertain a motion, is there any of these items that you would like to pull for further clarification?
I just had a couple of questions about two of them.
You want to pull those? Good.
Yeah. The one on UN budget transfers and water purchases.
Okay, so item number three. No, I'm sorry. That's four and five. Okay, we'll pull four and five, and we'll...
Five is water supply plan approval.
That's where the purchase is.
Is that where the purchase is? Okay.
Yes.
Those two.
And we'll place those when Christina and Anita are speaking, we'll bring those up. All right. I entertain a motion to approve the...
I'm going to do it.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of approving the items for consent other than items four and five, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Five, two. Item number J is item for presentation from the Health Department, COVID-19 update. Jim? Jim, how do you like the setup in this room tonight?
Hey, it looks like we're getting access.
It looks nice, Doc.
All right. I hope everybody is doing well. I'll try to be as quick as possible because I know you've got lots to do. So I'm going to just start showing the numbers for North Carolina. And in general, the state is seeing the lowest number of cases since this time last year. So looking at that peak, we're back down below where we were last June. And that's also reflected in the Beaufort County numbers. On the top, you can see the twenty-one day average. We've been pretty steady for, gosh, since March, early March, late February, at a constant line. And you can see there's a bit of a dip over the last couple of weeks, where we were averaging about five per day. We're now at about four per day. And then the bottom one, you can see the number of active cases that we're following. I remind you, though, that an active case is one that we've, you know, had a test result on. There's plenty of people out there that have the COVID virus, and it's not being tested, so we wouldn't know about those numbers. The estimates are that it's about 2.5 for every one case is not being reported to us. So running through the numbers, basically, I'll summarize it this way. We've had two hundred and fifty-three of our four thousand six hundred sixty-seven cases that have been hospitalized. That's about 5.4% of people being in the hospital, and about 2% of the cases have passed. I've got ninety-five deaths that are reported as COVID deaths right now, and I have five death certificates that I've been waiting on for a long time to come in. These are from other counties, and so I depend on them to send me those death certificates. So I'm still waiting on five from like February, March timeframe. So if those get reported into the system, it's not going to be, they're not new deaths. They're from the past, but don't be surprised if we do get to that hundred mark there. As of today, we have, like I said, forty-eight that we know of positive, and two of those are in the hospital, and one of those people is on a ventilator, and that person's been on a ventilator for a little while. This is an interesting graph that I pulled up for a new surveillance system that's out there where they're testing the water, wastewater, the sewage system. And that's the top graph shows the number for Greenville. They don't test Beaufort County or Washington's, but Greenville does test theirs. And so you can see the top graph shows the number of particular virus pieces that is in sewer water, and then they measure it, the amount per million people as a rate. And you can see the numbers. And then the bottom number is for Greenville, which is the same system that they took the samples from, the number of cases they had. You can see there's a correlation in how many particular matter, particulate matter there is in the sewage system, and then the number of cases in Greenville.
Let me ask a question. Are you talking about DNA fragments or all viral fragments?
COVID virus.
DNA, COVID-19 viral particles.
Right. They're able to spin it down, measure the amounts, and then they get a part per million, and then they measure it based on the number of people that are in that area. So they, you can see that there's a good correlation. So I just find it very interesting because what this does is allow for a surveillance system to go into place that doesn't depend on testing, because testing could be not just number of cases, you know, but number of people that are getting tested and all those. So I just thought it was interesting to show you all that there's other ways of doing this, and it does measure the community and not just individual people. But it's a system that I'll ask for them to do in our area, and see if we can't get added on to as a surveillance system for that. It's offered for free. Some other information that I was going to talk about was the variants. I know a lot of times people have talked about the variants out there. The three most common derived from the United Kingdom, South Africa, and India. They started to name them after the Greek letters, so Alpha, Beta, and Delta. The UK variant is easier to transmit amongst people than the original COVID, and it does have a higher death rate based on it. The South African and the Indian, and the Indian version, the Delta, is the one that recently spread through India, where you've heard about the number of cases that they've had in there. It also transmits easier from person to person. It doesn't necessarily have higher death rates attached to it, but what it does seem to do is decrease the antibody response to it. So therefore, you see a lot more of breakthrough cases where somebody's had it, they had it again, or if they had the original COVID, they could catch this COVID as well. So it's much easier for somebody to get both in that case. The current vaccine, and that's the question that everybody wants to know, does the current vaccine cover for this? And it seems that it does. The short answer is yes, it does cover for it. However, because of that quirkiness of lowering the response to it, it's not uncommon for you to still catch it if you've been vaccinated. But in most cases, the severity is going to be much reduced. And more research is coming out about this. We'll dictate whether the recommendation for the future will be to have a booster or not. We should probably hear about that more towards the end of the summer, as to whether it'll be a recommendation or not. As far as testing goes, we do continue to do testing. However, as a county, we're down to right at about three hundred per week that is asking to be tested or being tested because they're having a procedure done at the hospital or something like that. And so that's drastically down from the peaks that we've had. Our number of tests that come back positive out of those that we tested is around 7.9. And you can see that's been pretty steady around, you know, between five and 10% for a while. I think this indicates that people are not testing unless they're ill, or they're coming in for one of those procedures, or because they were worried that they have come in contact with somebody with COVID, or somebody told them they were around COVID, and that's when they're coming to get tested. So I think somebody is just worried. Generally, they're not coming to get tested anymore. But we do have the test sites available. So we're still doing that at the Health Department from eight-thirty to eleven. And on Monday at Freshwater Union Church, Tuesday's at Cornerstone, Wednesday's at the Wilkerson Center, Thursday at the Ruhratan Club in Bath. A new one, this is the new one, the one in Chaco Winnity now is offered on Fridays from ten to four. And you can't get tested in most of the doctor's offices right now. Yes, sir.
Why are we still having testing sites, auxiliary testing sites, if people aren't getting tested or wanting to be tested anymore to a great enough extent to...
To be accommodating for those that want to be tested.
But are people actually coming in, or is it...
About three hundred per week is what we're...
At all sites?
...in the county.
Okay. How many of these...
Sometimes the site may have two people that day. Sometimes they may have eight people that day. So it's not great numbers.
At what point do you stop doing it?
I mean, three hundred is still a lot of people that's asking for it. So, I mean, you know, it's...
Yeah.
And it's not costing us anything to do it.
It's costing the people.
True, it's costing money, you know, but it's not Beaufort County that's paying anything for it.
I'm going to ask one question, and you can answer it now, answer it later. My wife asked me to ask this one. She likes your report.
Okay.
At what level or percentage have Beaufort County adults been vaccinated?
Well, I'm getting ready to report on that.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll talk about the vaccinations now. Here you can see the graph that I put together. The red is the number of first doses that were given during that week, and the orange would be the number of second doses that were given or Johnson &amp; Johnson. So orange represents somebody that's completed the vaccination effort. So you can see that over the last five weeks, we've been down quite a bit compared to the previous weeks. And then last week, we were down to a hundred and twenty Beaufort County residents got vaccinated, and a hundred and eighty-three got their second dose or Johnson &amp; Johnson. So that's for, that's all right at three hundred vaccinations that were given last week. So this number is shown in a lot of the counties around us and in the state, the lower demand for the vaccines out there. And what we're trying to do at this point to get the numbers up is we have some community-based organizations that are circulating around the county. organizations that are circulating around the county, trying to talk to people and, you know, advocate for the vaccinations. And then they help them make appointments to come get the vaccine through the Health Department, or through any of the other sites, because we don't care where people get their vaccines done. We've been putting ads in, Facebook messages, and then, of course, any chance we get, we try to promote the idea of the vaccination. Research shows that about 17% of people still want the vaccine that hadn't been vaccinated. I guess they're procrastinators, or they're waiting for another opportunity, or maybe they're just still at that, you know, I'm not quite sure, mode. But we, you know, I do want to advocate for the vaccine. As the health director, I receive the vaccine, you know, I don't, the reports back for illnesses and stuff that come from it are very much lower than other vaccines, or equal to other vaccines. And so, you know, like I said, these other strains are out there, and we're going to continue to be exposed to it for a long time. So the best way to protect yourself and for those others around you is to get the vaccine. So I'll continue to say that it's a good thing to do and recommend it.
Beaufort County?
Beaufort County. That's what this one is.
Okay.
Okay. So in summarizing the number of vaccinations that have been given, for first vaccina, first doses, we're at 19,955, so almost 20,000. That's 42.4% of our total population has received the first dose at least. 18,427 have received the second dose, or the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which completes the series. So that's at 39.1. Is that the number you want? If you wanted just adults, down at the bottom, you can see 52.8% of adults 18 and over have received the vaccine, the first dose, and 48.8 have received the second. The goal is to get that 52.8 to 67%. But at this pace, it's going to be a little while before we get to that, unless we get a surge of people that are wanting to get vaccinated.
Offering any incentive packages for people who vaccinate? Thank you. Thank you for not doing it.
But I got something about that, I'll tell you about later. To me, the important population that I continue to monitor is the 65 and older, even though the virus has been, you know, devastating for some people that are younger than that. That is our most worrisome population. And we're at 84% have received at least one dose, and 80.3% haven't been fully vaccinated. So as far as the first dose vaccination rates, you can see the state has gotten up to 44% of their population, and we're at 42.4. This is the first time I've come to you all where we're not above the average. So I think this is partly due to the demographics in our area, and the fact that some of the metropolitan areas have really upped their efforts. And they have done some incentives in the state. There's been four locations in the state where they gave them summer spending money, like, I think it was $25 to get the vaccine, $25 if you drive somebody there to get the vaccine. I don't know if y'all have heard about that program. But that got touted at the last governor's meeting as being a very successful effort. So that may become a statewide effort. So we may be offering it. As looking at the vaccination amongst the different races, the black or African-American is at 22%. The expected is 26. White would be 70% have been vaccinated, and the expected is 73. So both of them are behind the expected, which probably is effort, or showing some hesitancy in all populations. Looking at it week by week, in the column section there, you can see, I put an orange line there to show everything above that. That orange line represents about 24%, or 26% would be, to show the African-American percentage that received the vaccine. And even though it's probably very difficult to see that, because the two blues are so close together, we have done a good job of maintaining the rate amongst both populations, black and white. The bottom one represents what should be others, which is about 10%, which would be Hispanics and other races in our county, and we're at where we expect to be. So both these are good indicators of equitable distribution of the vaccine in our county. Some other vaccine information, we are going to start offering Pfizer this week at the Health Department. This is the first week that we've had Pfizer coming. And so that will be eligible for those that are 12 to 17 years of age. So if you want your child vaccinated, as long as they're above 12, you'll be able to get it at the Health Department. And just go on the website, and you can make them an appointment. We do vaccinations Wednesdays and Thursdays through the Health Department. There are multiple vaccination locations around the county, including all the Vida Hospital, or all the Vida Care Clinics, county medicine sections, they're all giving the vaccine. O'Neill's Drug Store is giving the vaccine out, Walgreens, Walmart, Agape. So we all have vaccine available for people. And then another thing we're going to do is on the 11th, so this Friday, we're going to team up with Pitt County, and we're going to go do an event out at the Triumph Church, right there on the border between us. And we're going to offer the vaccine there from 9:30 to 3 o'clock, if anybody's interested. Catch a lot of traffic going back and forth, maybe. Last thing I wanted to bring up was to let you know that we're going to have an appreciation reception on Friday, the June 18th, at the Community College. For, what we're looking for, all the workers, the volunteers, and all those that helped with either the testing, call center operations, any EOC efforts, and vacation, vaccination efforts. I'm thinking about a vacation. Anyway, so we're going to try to get them all together at the Community College. Commissioners, y'all are welcome to come to give your thanks to all the efforts that they've done. And, you know, we're going to get in touch with everybody, get the headcount, and then have it there. One of the things I wanted to ask, if it was okay with y'all, is if I was able to close operations at the Health Department, so I can get all my staff over there for those, that time period here, if y'all would have any objectives, objections to that, or not. Consensus is okay.
Does anyone have any objection? By consent, you can do that.
And so that's pretty much my report for y'all, unless you have questions.
Anyone else have a question, Jim, Randy?
One question. How many people are on a team that shows up at the vaccine sites or the testing sites? How many people does that usually involve?
The team that's doing the testing?
Right.
I think there's about four or five. It's run by Optum. The one at the Health Department is run by us, but the rest of them are run by an organization called Optum.
Thank you very much, Jim. Job well done.
Thank you, sir.
We're down now to items for presentation. The first one is by NC DOT, Jeff. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. County manager Cynthia.
Yeah, it's page 366.
Okay. So I wanted to come to you this evening, we have a proposed safety project on 264, on the western side of the county, as you're coming in on 264. The intersection there at 264 and VOA, we've had an uptick of accidents. Our safety, our traffic safety group has been monitoring that. And so over the last 10 years, you've been averaging around three to four accidents a year, some years more, some years less. And so we have a, the ability now, because of the amount of accidents, we can get safety funding for that. And we can put in what we call a reduced conflict intersection at VOA. It's very similar, basically is exactly like the one we're doing on 264 in front of both Community College, and the one we did years ago at Asbury Church Road on the eastern end of the county. So that's what we're proposing. We've kind of got the mock-up of our concept plan. Since it's kind of right there near Cratchit's, and we already did that at Cratchit Store, we've kind of extended it on both sides of VOA a little bit, which basically would start it at the county line, basically, and take, and tie in to all the crossovers that are there between that and Cratchit Store. We make leftovers on the side streets, and then a couple U-turn bulbs for larger vehicles. We usually try to do that when you have a lot of industry or, you know, potentially larger trucks. So we want to be able to have larger trucks be able to make U-turns at those bulbs, and then, you know, usually cars and trucks can make U-turns at the leftovers at the other intersections. So just wanted to bring that to y'all, and see what you, if y'all would support it. Our safety group usually doesn't move forward with the funding until they get, you know, the feelings from the board. So if y'all are for it, we can, we can move forward with the project with the funding of it. Don't have a timetable for it yet, but waiting on y'all to make the first move, and then we'll go from there.
Jeff, one of the, one of the handouts we had was on our table tonight. If I understand this one, it shows 31 accidents at this intersection?
Yes, sir. And that was a report from.
It's a 10-year.
It's a 10-year report. And since that was finished, that, that report just covered up through March of 2020. So since March of 2020 through the end of May, you've had an additional eight accidents, one being a fatality in June. And six out of those eight were left turns, and that's, that's where the reduced conflict intersections help out, because it prevents the T-bones type crashes, which are the most severe. We have the most accidents, or most fatalities and injuries on those type of accidents. So it's a, it's a problem that's been around, and it doesn't look like it's going away. And since the last four or five years, it's upticked a little bit. Back in 2010, 2012, there was a couple years, then you didn't have any. But in the last four or five years, you've been seeing four or five accidents on average a year.
Any questions from commissioners? The floor is open for a vote of support, or a motion to support the safety project.
Motion to support the safety project.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
The next presentation was going to be by Mark Boxer, and Mark's mother is ill and in the hospital in Atlanta, so that's where he sat. But he recorded a video, and I think Brian's going to tee it up for us.
Actually, I am, Mr. Chairman, and I've had some exchanges with Mr. Boxer. First, do let me tell you, we had a minor glitch a little while ago, and you guys weren't streaming live for a little while. We're back up streaming live now, so just wanted you to know that. That's why I stepped out a few minutes ago to try to get that straight. So we're back up. But Mr. Boxer's available, and he's available to answer questions, so I'm going to call him as we get into his presentation. And he said he'd be happy to take any questions you had. He is in Atlanta, but this is very important to him, and he wanted to share with you. So Melissa, can you grab my screen?
I'd like to thank Chairman Waters for the invitation to speak about the topic of fiber fixed wireless and satellite in relation to broadband services. I apologize that I can't be there in person, been called away on a medical emergency, but I didn't want to provide, you know, at least a video, and will be available for questions after the video. But a little bit of background, I live in Hunter's Bridge and have worked from home there for the past 10 years, fortunately connected via fiber. I'm a degree in engineer, have worked in the fiber industry for 33 years. I currently work for OFS, which is the fiber optic arm of what was Bell Labs. OFS makes fiber and cable in and around Atlanta, with headquarters there, and with additional factories around the US and around the world. I've worked for Corning and AFL, other fiber and cable manufacturers. I'm also on the Technology Committee of the, and the Board of Directors of the Fiber Broadband Association and association to promote fiber deployment around the country, as well as the Board of Directors for, you know, NC Broadband Matters, which is a North Carolina broadband advocacy organization. So the reason I'm here is that bandwidth availability is very important, and the main message that I want to deliver is that bandwidth demand is continuing to rise very rapidly, and we should think about the communications grid over the span of decades. So we're already seeing digital divide, where areas without proper connectivity, you know, will struggle by comparison. And there is no wireless technical equivalent to a fiber backbone. So wireless and satellite are great technologies, but can't substitute for a fiber backbone long-term. Anything short of a fiber backbone will eventually need to be, or, you know, upgraded. And even fiber will need to have the electronics changed out on some, you know, some basis. But that's much cheaper than the expensive upgrades that take place with wireless networks, which often require, you know, fiber additions. And we'll talk about that in the presentation. And also with satellite, county residents and, you know, business connectivity needs are completely out of local control and at the whim of satellite providers. So, you know, the core of this is that bandwidth demand continues to rise at a very rapid clip. Cisco sees growth rates of 20 to 30% of demand per year. Ookla and others say it's similar. And the thing that's crucial and different is that the demand now is both upstream and downstream to and from the end user. Where it was predominantly before, it was predominantly downstream. So there are a ton of different applications with 4K video, telehealth, distance learning, home security, connected agriculture, et cetera. And there's just really no end in sight. So the graph on the right was put together by the Fiber Broadband Association, and I was part of the development of this. And, you know, we took a bottom-up look, application by application, at potential demand for a family of four, as technologies are adapted over, adopted over the next decade. And the Y-axis, that is megabits per second. There's an element of crystal ball with the forecast, but it essentially follows trends that are already in place, is in basic agreement with other forecasts, you know, with different methodologies. So we're just seeing this in, you know, a lot of different, different ways and different places. But some basic facts about fiber. Fiber has almost unlimited bandwidth. So it enables bandwidth abundance, which I'll contrast later, with bandwidth scarcity from wireless sources. And when I ask our PhDs about the ultimate capacity of fiber over short distances, and we consider Beaufort County to be a very short distance, they just kind of laugh. So, you know, we really don't know how to, how to fill up fiber yet, you know, because, you know, we just haven't had the demand to fill it all the way up in, you know, local area-type networks. So fiber is a closed system, and this is important in comparison to wireless or satellite, which share the spectrum. So it's easily upgraded over time by either changing to faster speeds over the same wavelength, and a wavelength is the color of light, or adding additional wavelengths. And in most cases, upgrading is as easy as plugging in different devices on the ends. Fiber is a durable asset. It's been deployed now for 35-plus years, and I'm often asked, you know, how long will fiber last? And my answer is that I really don't know, but that's to the long end. It's, you know, similar to asking how long will this desk that I'm presenting from last? If it's, you know, installed and maintained properly, we know that it'll last for 30 years plus, because that's already happened. But there's no reason to think that it won't last way, way longer. So fiber itself is very inexpensive, and can be less expensive actually than fishing line. The installation of a fiber network is typically the largest cost. And the good thing about installation dollars is that they often circulate in the community after a network is built. And on top of, now you're and on top of, now you have a durable asset as well. And with satellite specifically, once those dollars are out of the county, they're, they're gone forever. So, I mentioned on the last slide that fiber brings bandwidth abundance and I wanted to contrast that with the spectrum used by wireless and satellite applications. So, the picture on the right is a graph of different applications that use regulated, you know, electromagnetic spectrum. And so, you can go out to the NTIA website and see this. And to me, it's just absolutely fascinating to see all of the uses and the slices, but this fundamentally explains why fiber has abundance and wireless or satellite spectrum is fundamentally scarce. So, you know, just each one of those colors is an application. So, spectrum is typically allocated in slices of hundreds of thousands of megahertz and wireless engineers then take that spectrum and try and use it in the most efficient way, you know, they can and, you know, that is called spectral efficiency. And wireless engineers do a very good job of using, you know, the very scarce resource of spectrum that they, that they do. But, you contrast that with a single fiber, which has roughly 50 terahertz of bandwidth and that correlates to hundreds of thousands or millions more times, you know, available bandwidth. So, you know, that's, you know, a fundamental, fundamental difference. So, switching gears a little bit, just want, and this will set the stage for the rest of the presentation, you know, when we talk about wireless applications, we often talk about frequency and bandwidth and there's some general relationships that hold. So, higher frequency means more bandwidth and higher frequency often means smaller or shorter, lower distance that's, that's covered. So, AM and FM radio is an imperfect analogy to illustrate the concept. So, it's not perfect, but generally AM is broadcast in kilohertz and FM is in megahertz. And megahertz gives higher sound quality and the, the range of the sound is also smaller. Now, there's a little bit more going on here, but it's a start to help illustrate some of the next slides. So, I started with the AM/FM analogy since most people have some familiarity with radio ranges and quality and so now we apply this over to cellular communications. And so, you know, the illustration, so 3G was transformative in the 2000s, but now it's seen as being ancient and one cell site, so you can see one cell site, you know, could cover a broad area. As 4G came on the scene in the early part of the 2010s, more cell sites were needed since the frequencies and the bandwidth were higher and now you fast-forward to 5G, whatever that actually means, and even, you know, more cell sites are needed. So, how are these cell sites connected, especially with 5G? Most of them need to be connected with fiber for two reasons. First of all, fiber gives the bandwidth that can enable, enable 5G to fulfill its promise and then secondly, spectrum is typically so expensive that carriers want to use it only to provide services to end users, not to provide the backhaul service to the cells. So, just a little bit of background there. Wireless change, services have changed the world and fiber and wireless have worked together, you know, in complement with each other throughout my entire career. So, since I've been in the industry, people have been asking when, when wireless overtakes fiber. And my answer is never and that's because wireless services provide the in-connectivity for fiber, but fiber's ultimately needed to carry the traffic back to wherever because spectrum is so precious. And that's why most wireless networks are almost all fiber now, except for fiber to the end, you know, from the, the last antenna to the customer. So, wireless can be, you know, quicker to install and first cost can be less expensive, but it's often seen, so it's often seen as a reservation for fiber. So, you put wireless in, you gather customers for the service and then you fill in with fiber as you get demand and then you move the wireless equipment somewhere else. You know, however, as, you know, we discussed earlier, more bandwidth typically requires higher frequencies and higher frequencies typically require more fiber and in most cases, no fiber, no 5G. So, you know, wireless is also very expensive to upgrade and since the 1980s, we've been through many G-cycles, so 2G, 3G, 4G and now 5G. And we're a long way away from full 5G deployment and 6G is already in development. And in contrast, the single mode fiber that we've deployed since the 1980s is very similar to that of today. So, today's fiber is much higher quality, but the designs are similar to, as those that we used in the 1980s, which is why we hear that, that fiber is, is essentially future-proof. So, what about lower earth orbiting satellites such as Starlink, you know, which was a lot less company, or Kuiper, which is Jet Bezos' company? So, these networks are vastly better than previous generations and that's very good news for people in ultra-low places and I'm sure there'll be significant demand for their service from, you know, military, airline and, you know, all kinds of different sources. But, you know, just like wireless, satellite is going to struggle to keep up with demand long-term and we've already seen several studies that highlight that Starlink won't be able to keep up with the long-term commitments they've already made through RDOF, you know, notwithstanding additional growth. So, the fundamental problem just remains spectrum scarcity. And so, you compare fiber-to-the-home network with Starlink Satellite. And so, I've seen Starlink Satellite aggregate capacity numbers that are anywhere from 12 to 20 gigabits per second and, you know, that often, that also seems like a bit of a moving target, which is kind of expected since it's a new service and some of the spectrum use has been disputed. But, a Starlink Satellite will cover 20,000 square kilometers, around 11,000 square miles and the population in that area. And that's, you know, the equivalent of around 11 Beaufort Counties. So, fiber running XGS-PON, which is the newest protocol being installed today, which has 10, you know, gigabits per second upstream and downstream, this capacity serves, you know, typically 32 subscribers. So, you know, the main point comparing the two is that fiber, you know, gives you dramatically more bandwidth per subscriber than, you know, you're going to be able to get long-term with, with satellite. So, in conclusion, bandwidth demand will continue to rise and we need to think in terms of decades. Area without, areas without proper connectivity will struggle by comparison. There is, you know, really no technical equivalent to a fiber backbone. You know, wireless and satellite absolutely have their places, but can't substitute for a backbone long-term. So, I'm going to be available after this session for any questions, but, you know, this is my contact information. I am absolutely happy to have additional discussions or provide additional information and once again, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
So, Mark?
Yep.
Okay, I got you on speakerphone and, obviously, you were hearing the presentation go through. So, Mr. Chairman, if there are questions from the board, I'm not sure if Mark can hear from, if you're speaking to the mic. If not, we can let him know, but he's happy to answer any questions. And Mark, again, thank you for taking the time to do this. I know, I know it's a difficult time for you right now.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
All right, gentlemen, the floor is open for questions of Mark.
Hey, Mark, Commissioner Walker here. So, if we build this backbone on both sides of the river, how does it work then? Let's say I'm in my truck and I'm traveling to the far reaches of the south side. Am I buying a subscription that allows me to log on? And I, I'm guessing that a portion of this will be wireless, even though you've got the fiber optics running down both sides of the river. Is that true?
So, what, what I can tell you, you know, so I am, I am not with River Street and so I can't comment on the specific proposal. What I can, what I can tell you is, you know, what typically happens with, with backbone, you know, capacity and just with telecommunications capacity in general. And so, that, that is that ultimately you need to have fiber to take you out to the nether reaches and then generally that last, that last section from the, the fiber to wherever the use case is, is going to be wireless. So, I, I don't know if that specifically answered your question and I'll take follow-ups to that, but, you know, typically you have the, the backbones that are used over fiber and then those backbones are used to connect to some kind of wireless equipment or either fiber-to-the-home or business, just depending on what, what is being done. You know, but if you've got a connected tractor, then, you know, it may make sense to have that, that tractor connected to, you know, to wireless because you're certainly not going to have a fiber connected to it. So, you know, typically the, the last, you know, point is, is going to be wireless and then as the, and one of the points that I wanted to make was that as the, the bandwidth demands go up for specific applications, then the reach of those wireless, you know, the, the reach of the wireless equipment goes down. And so, that means that you've got to have more fiber to reach more cell sites and that was, you know, one of the keys of the 3G, 4G, 5G illustration on slide number, whatever that was, number seven. So, does that answer the question?
Uh, yes, it does. One more, would the fiber be more protected to, say, sun-spoked activity or some sort of electromagnetic pulse activity?
Um, so, so what, would it be more, yeah, so generally fiber is, you know, you get into the, the real technical arguments, but generally fiber is being seen as, you're kind of independent of those types of pulses. Those pulses are going to be underground. So, if you're talking about fiber to lightning strokes, there are, there can be some effects in very, very, you know, asoteric use cases, but in general, when you deploy fiber, you know, we don't worry about electromagnetic activity disrupting fiber. Does that answer the question?
Yes, is it relatively easy to repair?
Um, yeah, relatively, relatively easy is, you know, that's going to be, that's a relative term and it depends on, you know, how the network was designed and, you know, where the, you know, just where the damage occurs, but ultimately if you, you know, in most situations, you know, service providers are going to set up their network so that it is easy to repair or it's relatively easy to just, you know, re-slice in one or more, you know, just re-slice the, the ends together or put in, you know, an additional link in between. So, you know, so it really, that depends on how the network is set up, but, but absolutely, I mean, you, when you first install it, you typically splice things together and the repair process is going to be a version of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, Ms. Boxer. This is Commissioner Stan Etheridge. I have a question. Still speaking about the Wi-Fi wireless, I assume there will be microwave towers used and while you're not with River Street, can you tell me about what the speed would be for the wireless as it is moved from the fiber optic to the towers and then down to the folks using it, their end source?
Yeah, yeah, so it's great, it's a great question and when you get into, that's, that's the interesting thing about like 5G and why 5G has gotten so much, so much publicity is that the promise for 5G is, is blazing, you know, blazing speed, so potentially a gigabit to a telephone and a telephone site and then 20 gigs to a cell site. So, you know, 20 gigabits to a cell site location and then that would give you the capacity to serve, you know, one, a telephone with a gigabit per second, which is absolutely a blazing speed. So, that is the promise of 5G, but the reality of 5G is that, you know, with, with a lot of those networks, you're deploying in the 28, 33 megahertz range and, you know, there are different bands associated with 5G and that's why I say that the, that the, whatever 5G is, you know, the definition of 5G is somewhat disputed and so, and different, different carriers have different versions of 5G that they deploy with different speeds and different, you know, and different ranges for the, you know, for the equipment. So, with the gigabit version, in the very high, the very high-speed, you know, regime, then, you know, you're looking at the distance from the fiber backbone to the end user in the thousand-foot range, you know, so it's, you know, and that's why on slide seven, there were so many dots. So, as the speeds go down, then you can, you know, then you can, and, and the frequencies go down, you can get smaller amounts of that, but it's all, it's all related. So, the higher amount of bandwidth, the more, more bandwidth you need, the smaller that distance is and then the lower amount of bandwidth that, that you ultimately need, then the longer that distance can go. And so, sorry for the, the dissertation there, but does that help to answer the question?
Yes, it does and I have one follow-up question, if that would be okay.
Okay, I have one follow-up question, if that would be okay, and yes, that was very substantial. You may not be able to answer this, but you've probably hypothesized on the distribution of this product versus the cable products that we have in the county. The, the backbone will be traveling throughout the county on north and south side, primarily the south side. Is it going to be possible for someone who lives in a cable area, Southern Link area, let's say them for now, would they be able to use this other product, the, I'm sure that I'm not manager shaking.
No, you're, I think I understand the question and, and it's actually something that, that I really can't answer. That is going to be more, you know, I'm, I, what I can do is give you more of the technical information around, you know, what the different, different technologies can do. The specific proposal, then I've got to defer back to, you know, to that. So, you know, who, you know, who's going to be able to use what under what circumstances is something that I don't really feel like I'm qualified to, to answer.
Mr. Manager, at some point during this discussion, can you answer that?
Again, my understanding, you know, with the River Street proposal is that they are going to serve underserved and unserved areas. That's their mission because they are cooperative and that's what their goal is. So, if, if you're looking for them to serve in an area where there is an incumbent provider who's already providing the service, that's not where they're going to go first. They're going to go to areas that are underserved or unserved. That's just their, that's their, that's their mission on being a nonprofit cooperative.
This is Commissioner Repholz and the question is, on the, if we build this backbone and you end up with 5G cell sites, I assume that we have to make sure that those cell sites are acceptable, can accept multiple carriers.
So, is, so is that a question to me?
Yeah, let me kind of take that one, Mark. The, the proposal from River Street, and of course, this is, the proposal that came from River Street was that they, that you put in a fiber backbone that would be owned and managed by River Street with a revenue sharing for the county and that they would use, like, like Mark said, certain areas, they would use wireless so that they could get to, you know, we had talked about them using our water towers, our vertical assets, where they could run fiber to those and then do wireless to get to that last mile if they had to. And then, as that, as they were able to build out, then eventually get fiber to the, fiber to the premises for everyone.
Well, based on what we saw, you're going to have to have just a ton of cell sites, 5G cell sites.
If you're talking about doing 5G, now that's not what River Street does and that's not what they're proposing. They're not, they're not a 5G provider. They're not a, they, that's not what they do.
And that also depends, you know, on what version of 5G you do. There's, that's, there are so many, when you get into 5G, you know, companies have suit each other for all the definitions and there's a lot of ambiguity around 5G and what it actually means and so, you know, what we, yes, I'll, I'll, I'll at least mention that, you know, the one, one other thing is that once you have the capacity, then you can use that capacity in whatever way, you know, you want to use that capacity. And so, that, you know, that's going to be up to whatever the arrangements are between the county and the provider, but if you have no capacity, you have no options. Once you have the capacity, then you have a ton of different options as far as, you know, how you want to allocate that, either to, you know, to different services, to different individuals or to different competitors.
So, real quick on that, the, the ideal way would be for the county to put the network in, own the network and then lease that dark fiber to providers. The problem is the state of North Carolina will not allow you to do that. It is against the law for you to do that.
Good. Okay, I, Mr. Boxer, thank you so much for your presentation. I thoroughly appreciate your technical knowledge on this subject, but I, and I don't have a question, I have more of a statement. I really think this is something that the county doesn't need to be involved in. You've got tons of trillion-dollar companies out there that are fighting with each other tooth and nail to provide services every day. I realize it's a big deal with the federal government and providing broadband and all this sort of stuff, but since when is it necessary for me to tax you so somebody else can have broadband? I don't think so. We're, the- We're, the government is trying to provide services, everything to all people, all the way from changing diapers when you're born to frying you when you die. I mean, we, it, it's socialism on a grand scale. It should be against the law for the county to go out and get into business, keep participating with or competing with companies. Leave it up to the companies to provide the service. The American system based upon if you can build a better mousetrap, you're going to get the business is still as valid today as it ever was and we're creeping over into socialism. When, and, and it's interesting to know that when government starts holding hands with industry, that happened in Germany. That's called fascism. Nobody, everybody wants to be polite, nobody wants to talk about it, but that's what we're talking about here. This is none of our business. Let people fight it out and whoever can build a better mousetrap gets the business. It's not up to government to tax people to do this.
Uh, thank you, Mark, uh, for your presentation. We especially appreciate you calling in tonight under the circumstances and we wish you and your family, uh, a speedy recovery.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, so if that, yeah, if that's it, I'm going to go ahead and hang up.
Thanks, Mark. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. Bye.
We, uh, we have one more item and then we're going to take a break. Melody?
We come to you tonight requesting approval for the reclassification of a position at our agency. We would like to reclassify our administrative assistant one position to a social worker one position. Um, this position is the same pay grade, um, so there is no increase in our budget and it is an existing position which is currently vacant.
Questions? Can I motion to approve? Okay, I got a motion to approve the reclassification, second and a second. Any questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a 15-minute break. We're going to, we're going to start back and our next item is the voting equipment resolution and acquisition. And welcome our chairman of the board of election and you can introduce the other people.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I've got to be right honest with you, after all the years I came over here and swore in, this is the most humbling I've ever been before the Board of Commissioners. Anyway, I'm Tom Payne, the chairman, John Tate, our secretary, and of course, I, Steve, executive director of both County Board of Elections. As you well know, we have been served well by the M-100 optical scanners for the last 16 years, and they've been very accurate, I think you all agree. But when it gets to a point, everything, good thing comes with end and in the last election, those machines began to sound like me getting out of a chair. So we began to look at the process. This is the cycle that is a good cycle to purchase new machines. And so, North Carolina has two vendors. We've had both vendors come and, uh, give us a display of their equip, equipment. It's been up to the public. We've had public, uh, participation and most of you have been by to see him and seen exactly what we've done. Well, we have met all the requirements and so the last meeting, our board voted unanimously of select, uh, election systems and software out of New Bern, North Carolina. Now, this company is no stranger to both the county because they're the ones we bought the vend, there was the vendor we, we got the M-100s from 16 years ago. And I would like to say that it's through their great maintenance and the KLC that Kelly and her staff give those machines has kept them going as long as they have, as their life expects. It was probably about 10 years and so we've been real fortunate. Tonight, the board wanted me to come, John and I are here representing the board and we wanted to give you a special thanks because you as a county commissioner realized about five years ago that this day was going to come and that it was going to be a very big burden on the taxpayers to buy all new election equipment at one time. And with your wisdom, you have been putting $55,000 a year away anticipating that this day is coming. And as a board, we want to thank you and thank you for helping and seeing that this day would come. Uh, in your information packet, you will see all the information that you really need. Um, there's a resolution, a proposed resolution that Kelly has drafted on behalf of the board. We do ask that, uh, that you kindly consider, um, adopting that resolution tonight so that we can get in the process of getting our new machines. Oh, thank you and I appreciate being here. John?
Excuse me, I think everyone's had a chance probably to, uh, review the information and I think most of the Commissioners had a chance to see both companies and their equipment. Um, is there any questions before I entertain a motion?
Just, just one question. On the purchase order, it says that this is, this pricing of purchase order is valid for 30 days. Okay? And that they'll have to re, re-quote it if it's over 30 days and it is over 30.
I'm sure that that's going to remain the same.
Okay.
I'm very sure of that. Because we're waiting on the contracts to even come through. So ESNS knew of our intent from our board, so they've been processing that and I think, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
Mo, motion to approve?
Okay, got a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the purchase, raise your right hand. Those opposed, vote is six to one. Tom, thank you and thank your board and thank Kelly for the work that you did on it and the fact that you were able to wring 16 years out of the other equipment.
Well, thank you and I look forward to seeing you in 16 more years.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We've got a lot of people up there looking at each other. I don't think that any of us will be here in 16 years from now. All right, we're down to, uh, items for decision. Uh, our tax assessor, Lloyd.
Yeah, we get used to the new locations. Believe I have two items, um, in front of y'all tonight for decision. I may have them backwards and I hope I do not. Um, they're both going to be, one is actually an interesting case. Um, I actually have a, um, I had an application for board of equalization review that was hailed in the county. What essentially happened is the post marking was on time, everything was perfect. It actually took an absurd amount of time for the post office to deliver the mail. We got it, we received it, we actually reached out to the taxpayer. We were in agreement with him through my office. Uh, we actually came to an agreement on the value of that and we would ask just the board to essentially ratify that value, which we have. The other item, I believe that was read number 47269 in the county.
Excuse me, Lloyd, we, we'll take them one at a time. We need to vote on them separate.
Uh, probably makes sense to me, yes, sir.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Mike.
It was on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any questions of Lloyd? All right, all those in favor of, uh, the negotiated value, raise your right hand. Those opposed, vote seven, zero. Okay, Lloyd, go to your, uh...
My, my other one is actually really cut and dry. It, it's essentially what it is, is just, uh, asking y'all to, um, grant a, uh, antique airplane value exclusion. Everything looks proper on this. The gentleman got everything done that was supposed to be done. It, uh, kind of, to be honest, filled through the cracks just a little bit as far as that goes. I know the board in the past has, um, for various exemptions and stuff like that, have had us in front of them to approve these. Everything is in place for this. This is an antique aircraft. It does, you do get granted exclusion. He was just, to my memory, he was just a few days late on that as far as that goes. But the board does have it in the discretion to grant that exemption.
How many, how many years is it before it's classified as an antique?
I'll be, I'll be honest, this is a 1946, uh, on the airplanes, I need to brush it up. There was a change on that a while back, but I was thinking the, uh, the 1946 airplane, but I, I, I'm, I'm thinking there's actually a couple rules as far as this goes and I don't want to tell you that, uh, but I think it's 1954 for antique airplanes, I believe.
Well, it's...
So in other words, I haven't do the math, but I believe it's 1954 before for the Meg model, you know, for the Megs for that guy.
All right. Someone want to make a motion? Motion to approve. Have a motion to approve and a second. Any questions or comments? All right, all those in favor of the exemption, raise your right hand. Thank you very much, Lloyd. All right, we're down to Public Works. Wes, I think you're up first.
Good evening, thanks for having us. I'm betting laid off for Public Works tonight. First item I have for you tonight is a renewal of our lease agreement with the town of Aurora for the Aurora Siloise Collection Site. Um, this is a proposed three-year lease agreement which actually would be taking effect this past January 1st. The lease rate is $8,240.40 per year, which is equal to the rate we've paid for the past three years. And, uh, the proposed lease agreement has already been, um, executed by the town of Aurora and the county attorney has, uh, reviewed the agreement and just, uh, reading his comment to me, uh, in, in his opinion, they have made it better and more complete with no harm to the county.
Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve, second.
Second.
And a second. Uh, questions for Wes? All those in favor, raise your right hand. You want to go into the next item?
Certainly. Um, second item also deals with our collection sites. Uh, back in October, uh, you all approved, uh, for us to adjust the operating hours of the collection sites based on daylight savings time. Um, following implementing that schedule, we have found, uh, that simplifying the schedule by, uh, shifting the hours based on the calendar month instead of the actual dates of daylight savings time, uh, can provide many benefits, um, such as it provides a consistent schedule year over year, uh, which will hopefully help the public better understand the schedule, um, simplifies language for signage and the website and also will make our monthly invoicing from public services make more sense. Um, so in lieu of what, what we do now, which we adjust based on the dates of daylight savings time, our proposal is we operate on a winter schedule which is closing the site at 6:00 PM from November 1st through March 30th and operating our summer schedule closing at 7:00 PM from April 1st to October 31st. If this schedule is approved, it would take effect on July 1st and, um, the change would not affect the day that each site is closed.
Motion to approve. Our motion's approved.
Second.
And a second. Questions of the change in policy?
I've got one.
Yes?
You will, you will notify county residents of the changes, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We will post the update on the website.
And, and...
And it'll be included on the signage, which I, we're, we're in the middle of the summer schedule right now, so really it won't be an issue until...
But you, you'll know in time about the winter schedule.
Yes, sir.
You've got plenty of time to do that.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Thank you very much. Christina, when you finish the first one, we took an item from consent and moved, so if you'll just stay there and do that one.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Commissioners. The next item in your agenda book is regarding, uh, actually it's a little different from what's on the title, uh, regarding the award of the contract for the Financial Services Center roof replacement as well as the fiscal year 2021 facility capital improvement fund allocation. Uh, both of these items are of course regarding the, um, are funded through the fiscal year 2021 facility capital improvement funds. Uh, back in, uh, previous, back in the July meeting, uh, we did allocate funds for the replacement of the roof right above our heads here for the Financial Services Center. REI Engineers, we contracted with them, they prepared the bid package, the plans and the bid package and, uh, issued that out for bids. Three bids were received on May 13th, 2021. The low bidder is Owens Roofing of Smithfield in the amount of $93,300. Uh, the bid amount does exceed what the original estimate was. Keep in mind that original estimate, uh, was gathered back in January of 2020. Uh, so there is a, I am asking to, uh, move funds around within that same capital improvement fund and, and asking to award the contract to Owens Roofing in the amount of $93,300.
Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve? I'll second that. Uh, question, Christina. That is just on this part of the building?
Yes, sir. It's just the western portion of the roof.
Okay. Any other questions on the contract?
You said move around some funds?
Yes, sir.
Moving from where?
Look on page 411.
On page... On page 411, um, if you, the chart that's there, it gives a summary of what the initial allocation of the $575,000 that was within, uh, the capital improvement fund. Uh, there was, uh, for the exterior, $245,650 was originally allocated for a portion of the exterior courthouse repairs, $46,880 for the Tideland HVAC controls, approximately $92,470 for the Financial Services and Roof Replacement and that left a remaining $190,000 for the courthouse interior renovations. Uh, based upon we have, or the contract has been awarded for the exterior courthouse repairs, so that number remains constant at $245,650. The Tideland Building HVAC Control Project is complete, so that came in at $46,987. And, uh, with the Financial Service Center roof replacement, when the engineering costs is added into it, that's a total of $102,300. So the remaining of the 575 leaves a remaining $180,063 for the courthouse interior renovations. Uh, as we've talked about at the budget workshop and at other times, now that the exterior renovations at the courthouse are wrapping up, we are about to transition into the interior renovations at the courthouse.
Same funds?
Same funds, yes, sir. That same original $575,000 which was the fiscal year 2021 capital facility improvement funds.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of, uh, the reallocation, uh, raise your right hand. Seven, zero. Uh, item number four, I'm sorry, item number five, under items for consent was a 2020 water supply plan and I think, uh, Hood, Hood, did you have that question?
Yeah, she, uh, I'll let her explain.
Let her explain it. She's talked to me about it and I understand it. Okay.
Okay. We're good.
Explain it, the $250,000, why did it show up?
There's a $250,000 that's being moved into this fiscal year because there was a, one invoice from, uh, last year's fiscal year that was not paid, that needs to be paid out of this current fiscal year, so there will be 13 months paid out of fiscal year 2021. Uh, so that's why, uh, the revenues are being, uh, there's the budget amendment that is moving the additional revenues into this year's budget, into the expense items. Is that correct, Anita?
I was more attributing it to, um, the sales were much higher during, um, the COVID pandemic with folks working from home and school being out. So our water sales are really, really high for the fiscal year and we need to appropriate some of that extra revenue to cover invoices from the city to purchase water to cover those sales.
Okay, so we, since that was an action item, we'll need to have a vote on it.
It was a consent.
No.
It was a consent item, I pulled it, so there was no action on it. Uh, but now I'm thoroughly confused. Um, if, if it was simply because we were buying more water every month, then it doesn't need to be... to be in here. But if it's an extra invoice, there may be some rationalization for it being in here.
I mean, I could certainly look to see if there's an extra invoice. If Christina says there is, then there is. You know, I do look at the water sales every month, that does fall under my purview, so I look at the billing. So I know that during the pandemic, our sales were a lot higher, and since what we sell has, part of that has to be purchased from the city, it would make sense that if our sales are really high, then our water purchases are going to be higher as well.
Well, yeah, all is true, but, but we've got two different reasons on the floor for this being in here. That's what I'm concerned about. One of them is there's an extra invoice that wasn't paid, that makes sense. But if you're just buying water every month, that doesn't need to come before the commissioners because it's an enterprise fund.
Well, even though we're, it is an enterprise fund, it still has to be in budgetary compliance. And it could be a combination of both reasons, it doesn't have to be one or the other, but I'm happy to look it up right quick.
Now, why don't you all figure this out and come back next month and tell us about it?
I'll ask one question. The water rates, is it pretty much?
Good.
There we go. Oh, the water rates pretty much the same, even though we're buying extra, because sometimes we pay too much when we get something more than what we need, like moving prisoners to Pitt County.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So is it, how much, what are the rates from the City of Washington? Is it pretty much the same as agreed upon amount that we always pay when we exchange?
Our water rates, our monthly invoice from the City of Washington is composed of many different components. We pay, there's a certain amount that we pay a portion of their overall cost to produce the water. Many years ago, when the Beaufort County Water System was first initially developed, the choice was made not to build a water treatment plant on the north side of the river. The decision was made to expand the City of Washington Water Treatment Plant. So the county gave funds to the city for them to expand the capacity of their treatment plant, and so we have continued to do that. So based upon the amount of sales per month, there is a calculation that is done based upon our meter readings as well as the city's meter readings. I mean, we do an addition and a subtraction to come out with the net amount, and we come up with the amount that is sold to their, the city's customers, and then the amount that's sold to the county's customers. And on a pro rata amount, we pay that portion of that month's expenses. So there's a portion of their personnel cost, a portion of their chemical cost, a portion of their utility cost, a portion of their indirect costs, all of that. So each monthly invoice, there's a different amount.
Relative to what we normally pay, would you assess it to be how much more or less?
I would say it's pro rata. So again, typically speaking, there's a certain amount that it, your chemical cost will, your personnel cost will not increase incrementally with the amount of water that you make. So their personnel costs are set. So even if they are producing, if the trains are running additional hours, the personnel costs are not increasing. So personnel costs will not increase even though you may be producing a larger amount of water. Your chemical costs may increase because as you're producing and treating a larger amount of water, your chemical costs will increase at that point. So all in all, there's not that much difference.
Five, 10%, somewhere in that range.
I would not dare to give a percentage increase on that.
Okay.
What happened was, we were doing a water system on the north side of the river, the city was getting ready to expand their water plant, rather, we took our capital and put it into their water plant. That's why we only paid the operating expense for water from, from the city. It's really, they, I guess, own the plant for regulatory reasons, so we don't have to mess with that, but we also own part of the plant too, so we just pay expenses for water. We don't really buy water from them in that, in that sense. So it's, it's like she says, the fixed costs are the same, the only thing you pay for is more salt if you're running more trains.
Jerry?
When we ran the, the water line from Chaco into, to Washington?
Yes, sir. A 12-inch line.
The 12-inch line, was that not to reduce the amount that we were buying from the city?
It was at that point in time, and that was, I was not involved in the decision-making of that. I started working with the county just as that project was starting, but it is my understanding that part of the reason, that is part of the reason that was done, but at that time, there was, the city was also limited. They were reaching their maximum capacity of their water plant due to the industries that they had at that time. There is not such a, they do not have such a large demand now that they did before. So we are supplying quite a bit of District 1 with that water, but we are, we are utilizing both.
Anita, if we defer action until next month, is that okay as far as audit is concerned?
I think it will be.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
On the budget amendment?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
You can do that.
If you're looking, are you in munis, Anita?
Yeah, I'm looking at the sales part, so I do have information on the sales, if you wanted.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so we budgeted for water sales for the current fiscal year 7.2 million. They're going to come in at about 7.7 million, so there's going to be about a $500,000 surplus in our sales, which, you know, leads me to believe that at least part of the issue with needing to appropriate additional money on the expense side for paying the water invoices to the city is due to this, excuse me, this increased sale amount. On the expenditure side, there does appear to be an extra bill that we'll have to pay that because one was missed being accrued last year, so it is due to both issues, I believe.
Okay. I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. All right, need a motion?
Well, I move that we approve the budget amendment that we're considering.
All right. And a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you, Christina. All right, we're down to the finance area. So Anita, you're up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So right quick on the monthly financial update, I want to tell you about the June sales tax distribution that we're set to receive on the 15th of this month. This will be for the March sales, remember there's a three-month lag there. So our March sales were $1,077,000, and that's the second highest distribution that we've had in a two-year period. Also, last week, I sent everyone a budget to actual report, a financial report. Didn't receive any questions back on that, but wanted to give you an opportunity to ask questions if there are any on that tonight.
Anyone for the question?
Well, that's pretty much the extent of my presentation tonight.
You want to move to your next one?
Would like to move into the decision items for the cost of issuance on our three refinancings. The first one is for the GEO bonds. The closing for the refunded Series 2012, 2015, and 2017 general obligation school bonds occurred on June 1st. It produced savings of just under $400,397,529 over the next seven years. At closing, we received a deposit in the amount of $80,000 to pay closing costs associated with the bond issuance. This revenue needs to be appropriated, excuse me, needs to be appropriated so that invoices can be paid for vendors on the services that were offered. And you see the list there, we have our financial advisors, the local government commission, our trustee, the escrow fund agent, and then our attorney, bond cancel, and then a little bit of money there, $2,000 for miscellaneous. So my recommendation tonight would be to approve the budget amendment on page 417. That recognizes the $80,000 that we received at closing. It appropriates $70,300 to pay those invoices, and it adds $9,700 back to the fund balance.
Motion to approve. We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment as related to the general obligation bonds refunding. Questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? All right, you want to go to the next one?
Yes, sir.
Anita?
Page 419, similar situation here, but it relates to the limited obligation bonds cost of issuance. Those were refunded back on May the 6th. It produced savings in the amount of $3.185 million over the next 20 years. At closing, the county received a deposit in the amount of $161,630 and change to pay costs associated with the bond reissuance, and those invoices are listed there. You can see them. Any questions about those there? There was a little bit of difference here with our bond cancel. Mr. Bob Jessup of Sanford Holehouseer did offer us a $10,000 discount on his services if we paid in installments during the transaction rather than waiting at closing three or four months later down the road for his funding, and so we chose to do that. And we were able to find that money within the water fund expenditures, so that has essentially already been covered. So what I'm asking for tonight is on page 420, I'm asking you to recognize the proceeds that we received, the $161,630. The expenses we need to pay are $152,162, leaving us $9,468 to go back in funds.
I got a question, Anita. On the local government commission, this one was $12,500 and the other one was 500, is it so much based on the dollar amount?
I think it's not only based on the dollar amount, but also the, how complex the transaction is and the time it has been, and those lives were, they were pretty complex.
I got you. Okay. Did we get a motion? I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And we have a second. Questions, comments? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Your next one?
The next one is page 423, same thing for the USDA refunding. Now, we're putting the cart a little bit before the horse here because the next item I'm going to have is actually your final approval on the USDA, so we probably should have flip-flopped those, but it's coming, just wait for it. So on page 423, cost of issuance for USDA, you can see that we are going to close those this Thursday on June the 10th. It'll produce savings just right at $820,000 for the county. We were able to knock 10 years off the term of that loan also on that one, and this one did not involve selling bonds, it was a little more straightforward. I had previously been involved in a USDA refinancing at the city, so I was very comfortable in leading this refinancing, so we did not use our financial advisors, therefore the cost of issuance is minimal. I expect it to be around $15,000, and you can see those fees listed there. So my recommendation is that you approve the budget amendment on page 424, which actually appropriates fund balance to pay for those debt issuance costs, because those costs were not wrapped up in the refinancings like the bonds were for the other two.
Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. And a second. Questions, discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Continue.
Yes, sir. Page 425, this is the final approval of the USDA refinancing. This will complete all the refinancings, and we can move on with our life, hopefully. These will close this Thursday, June 10th, like I just mentioned, saving $120,000 approximately, just like I just mentioned. There are four documents that need to be approved tonight by the board. It's the resolution, the intercreditor agreement, the deed of trust, and the financing contract with the winning bidder, which is Sterling National Bank. And we have a representative here from Sanford Holehouseer, Mr. Sam Smitherman. He's happy to answer any questions and go through these documents if you would like for him to do so.
Questions?
I've got one question.
Okay.
That deed of trust, is that's just for the short-term loan for the term refinancing? When does it die?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Sam Smitherman, I'm with Sanford Holehouseer. The deed of trust is for the mortgage on the Allied Health Building, is in conjunction with this loan, so basically that is the collateral needed, or the collateral used as part of this refinancing, and that is shared as part of that lien in the intercreditor agreement with the United States Department of Commerce, the Economic Development Administration. So the deed of trust will expire for the United States Department of Agriculture, who is a shared lien holder, and we are substituting them with Sterling National Bank.
So the date, I mean, when does it expire? When the whole loan is paid off?
Right, when the loan will be.
That's what I was trying to say.
But this part we're voting on right now is a USDA loan, it's not a bond, right? This one's a loan.
It is a refinancing loan from Sterling National Bank.
It's a 12-year bank loan to pay off the USDA loan.
Got you.
Right.
Any other questions? Motion to approve. Got a motion to approve the resolution and the documents to finalize the USDA refinance.
Second.
And a second. Questions? Any further questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you very much.
Commissioner, we just want to, uh, sorry. Chairman, we just want to say thank you for allowing us to work with the county on these three refinancings, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, item number six is the implementation of GASB statement 84 and 87, I mean, 84 and 97.
Yes, sir, that is on page 470 of your agenda book. So we are required to implement GASB statement number 87 and 97 before June 30th, and to be compliant with the new standards, the county must now reclassify some activities that have historically been classified as fiduciary or agency funds, and now we have to start accounting for them as a governmental or special revenue fund. These also require budgetary estimates moving forward. So after careful examination as well as consultation with our auditors and the local government commission, I've determined that the county has four activities or programs that have previously been treated as fiduciary or agency funds, but now need to be budgeted as a special revenue fund. There are the DSS Representative Payee Account, 4H Activities, Cooperative Extension, and EMS Billing and Collections. And so you can see there, beginning on page 484, you will have four ordinances there, one for each fund, with the annual estimated amount of revenues and expenditures, and my recommendation is that you adopt all four of these ordinances tonight so we'll be compliant. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we need a motion to set up these accounts, that's the DSS, 4H, Cooperative Extension, and EMS. Entertained a motion to, so moved. Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion. All those in favor of these four accounts, raise your right hand. And Anita, item number four was pulled from consent, and that's the year-end budget transfer dollars, and that's on page 25, if you guys want to flip back.
Yeah, page 26.
26, I'm sorry. Go to the bottom of the page, where it's, the bottom of the column where it says decrease EMS. My question is, for a subsidized account, how can you withdraw funds from a subsidized account?
I would say that all of our departments are subsidized. We're simply moving funds from one public safety activity to another.
That is appropriated funds to bridge the gap between what we tax for EMS and what we actually spend for EMS, minus whatever we collect. So what you're doing is reducing.
So what you're doing is reducing the amount of the subsidy.
What I'm saying is, if you'll look, let's look at the very first line item. We need additional funding in tax administration, and let me tell you why. Because we had two tax assessors during a three-month period. There was an overlap, and we didn't come back and appropriate additional salary benefits. I was on leave. That slipped through the cracks. We missed doing that. So now, you know, and looking at his budget, he's running short on his salary line because of that three months that we not only had our new tax assessor here, but Mr. Bobby Parker was still here to train him and, you know, show him things, so to speak. So, you know, so there are different departments here that need additional funds. They would be shown in the positive. The next one is the tax collector. There's an increase in our foreclosure cost, so we need to add $20,000 there. So I'm saying there's surplus funds in the area of fire protection, medical examiner, and EMS that I'm able to take and allocate up to those divisions to cover that instead of asking you to appropriate fund balance.
What you're saying is the EMS budget contained this $42,500, and you're reducing that budget?
That's right.
By that amount of money?
Exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we did a motion to approve that item.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, I think that's your last one, Anita. Let's see where I'm at. Okay, we're down to David. You've got the bid offered to purchase property. That's on 488.
Talking to this? It's on page 488. This is a piece of property that had previously been deeded to Beaufort County, 138 Vermont Avenue, Longacre, and we had a bid that remained open, or was to remain open, $500 bid for 10 days. We had an upset bid, came in on Friday afternoon, and that bid is now a $1,000 bid. I was just informed that the $1,000 bid has now gone to $2,000, so as long as, with another upset bid, this is a nice little house, and so it's probably going to bring, bringing further money in. What I would like for you to approve, they can approve the $500 in this case.
It has not been advertised yet, has it, in the paper?
No. It has not been advertised yet.
So do we need to take the higher amount that's been presented?
I think so. We've got a deposit on a $2,000 bid on that piece of property, so that's what we want to put in the paper.
The $2,000, so that's what our motion needs to be?
$2,000.
Okay. All right, entertain a motion to accept the $2,000 and the...
Before I make that motion, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this $2,000 bid, Councilor, is that, does that come, does that require a 10-day upset bid?
Yes.
Okay, so why are we accepting if we need to wait till the 10 days, don't we? Yeah, we wait till the 10 days before we accept the bid.
Yes, sir. We, you, what you're essentially doing is approving the start of the upset bid process, and then I'll place it in the newspaper either Wednesday or Saturday, giving 10 days to upset.
I stand corrected I use that term. Okay. All right.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second the motion. Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. All right. Brian, we're down to your spot.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. First item is on page 491, it is related to the Board of Education compensation adjustment request. As you will recall, when you had a joint meeting with the Board of Education, they presented two items to you. One was their budget request for fiscal year 2122, and then they made a separate request related to their compensation. You have the two statutes that are attached to that that require the Board of County Commissioners to approve that adjustment. They request changes currently. They are asking that it go to essentially a stipend per month. They were, historically, it has been on a payment per meeting, so they are asking for the chairperson that it go to $600 per month regardless of the number of meetings, from what it was, was $188 per meeting, which they normally had two meetings, but over this past year, they said they had a whole lot more meetings. And then for board members, they want to go to 500 per month as compared to the previous, which was 132 per meeting. I would advise you that we had conversations with the folks at the school of government relating to this, and it was their opinion and suggestion that the two county commissioners that are married to Board of Education members recuse themselves from the vote because essentially any change in compensation would essentially be putting funds in your own pocket, in your household's pocket, so it would be appropriate for you to recuse yourself from that. So...
We did a motion to recuse. All right, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Got a second? All right.
I got a question now. How about if you divorce her today?
I think it goes a lot more than that.
All those in favor of recusing on this particular vote, Commissioner, you can vote on this, Commissioner Walker and Commissioner Booth. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. I think that was unanimous. Okay, now entertain a motion to approve the recommendation.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion? Just for clarification and transparency, if you take the two meetings, the average of two meetings per month, and then you go to this base, it is an increase of 60% for the chairman and an 89% increase for the board members. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those, well, I think that was five, right? Okay. You want to go to your next item?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is on page 495. This is the tax collector appointment. As you recall, in June of 2019, the Board of Commissioners appointed Mr. Wayne Kenyon to a two-year term as tax collector, and that will expire June 30th of this year. Per general statute, the Board of Commissioners shall appoint a tax collector to serve for a term to be determined by the appointing body. Historically, the board has matched that term with that of the assessor's appointment. So the recommendation is to, for the board to appoint the tax collector for a term so determined by the Board of Commissioners.
I make a mo...
Go ahead.
I make a motion to appoint the tax collector.
How many years?
Four years. Is it four? That the other one have?
Two-year one.
There are...
Yeah, you can, we've been doing two.
What do our assessor has, Mr. Mayor, our members manager?
The next item is the assessors, and the assessor, because he is an initial appointment, would be a two-year appointment.
Well, I will also, I remake that motion. I make a motion that we appoint him for two years.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it, but would you consider four years again? We can do four years.
We can, but we want to keep it in compliance with both of them, so the next two years we do, probably do both of them for you.
It sort of matters, but if you guys want to do it that way.
Any other comment?
I have a comment. I can make an argument that you need to stagger them, otherwise you're going to wind up with a tax assessor and a tax collector, both of them vacant at one time. Do you really want to do that?
Change it to three years.
Why, I think it...
I was trying to comply with, I mean, I have a problem, I don't have a problem with, but I was trying to comply with what the manager was, was trying to bring both of them in compliance at the same time.
But we're their appointing body.
I understand that.
Manager doesn't make that appointment. We do, we can make the decision.
What's the history? Two years.
There's been a reason that we have done it for the two years. We can do it for the three years or four years. You know, I'm a strong advocate of staggering it, you know, let's do three or four years.
Well, vote it up or down. I'm going to keep a motion on the floor.
And that's for two years, okay? And we have a second? And we had a second?
Yeah.
And we got a second? Any other?
We haven't had that.
All those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make an appointment that we appoint the tax collector for a three-year period.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of that motion, raise your right hand. Seven, zero. All right, now we're down to the tax assessor.
So the next item is on page 496. This is the appointment of the tax assessor. At the June 2019 meeting, you'll recall that Mr. Bobby Parker was appointed to a two-year term as the assessor, and that was to expire June 30th of '21. Obviously, Mr. Parker retired in December of 2020. Mr. Lloyd Salter was appointed to finish his unexpired term, and per general statutes, the Board of Commissioners needs to make an appointment to fill the position for a two-year term due to this being an initial appointment, and that would be effective July 1 of 2021.
I make a motion that we reappoint the tax assessor to a four-year period.
It would be, it's an initial appointment, so it'd be for two years.
You got to do this one.
All right, for two years.
Second. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor of the two-year appointment, raise your right hand. Congratulations, Lloyd didn't win.
And don't go to y'all at the same time.
Okay, we're down, we're down to Katie on the vote and delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. We did a vote and delegate.
Yes, sir. I actually, at this point, only have three of you going, so if you want somebody to vote in person, then it has to be one of those three. They are offering a virtual option, so that opens that up, but none of you have really shown any interest in that.
Is this a national conference?
This is the state.
This is the North Carolina. Who's going?
Commissioner Booth, Commissioner Langley, and Commissioner Richardson.
Put me down too for the state conference. Thanks.
Okay, I make a motion that our vote and delegate be our chairman, Jerry Langley.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We also need an alternate.
You don't have to, but they recommend one just in case he's not available.
If he has to leave early or something.
Or doesn't make the trip for some reason. It's not until August.
I make a motion, Mr. Richardson do it, maybe he'll go up there and behave.
Okay, we got a motion. Is there a second for Hood to be our alternate? I'll second that. All those in favor of Hood being an alternate, raise your right hand.
Katie, I really thought I was going.
You did. You didn't call.
No, I did. I called and I...
I think I have yours for NAGO, which is the national.
Okay, but is it down in Wilmington?
Yes. No, not the NAGO one, the local one is in Wilmington.
Okay, because I remember the Wilmington one I was going to do.
I will check on that tomorrow, but...
All right. I think, I think that was the case.
All right, Commissioner Richardson, you're up.
Oh, okay. Well, it's, how are we going to proceed with... Let me turn this thing on. How are we going to proceed with the uses of the American Rescue money? You know, we've been here, we're taking, we're taking recommendations and all of this sort of stuff. We have, we have not developed a list. I mean, you're having these meetings next month, people should be coming in saying what they want. Even if it's not going to fly, it needs to go on a list for our consideration when the time comes, and, you know, anybody can put in anything they want to.
I think this is exactly what we're looking for, is this is, you know, throw out your ideas.
Well, you know, I've got the ideas that I have on my list here. We're talking about the register of deeds space, we're talking about build, and that's new space for the registered deeds, build out the basement of the courthouse to increase the number of jail cells. That's infrastructure to me. We're talking about the Washington Airport. I realize we may never do that. We're talking about the Bell Haven tidal flood control. I realize we may never do that. Megasites for solid waste, you know, that, we should find out what we can do with that. And then there's the issue of the county library. The county library has been hanging out there for as long as I have been a commissioner, and everybody says, well, we got a county library. Well, where is it? We've got a hodgepodge of a bunch of agreements that go nowhere, and we really don't have a county library. The county library is run from Martin County, and we're part of a bookmobile library. There's a lot of service that could be provided for the county with infrastructure with a county library, like, for instance, Currituck County has a library that has a lot of services available to the public, among those are meeting rooms and a whole bunch of other things that, that could be used. So those are the things that I throw out. I want to hear what everybody, the ideas that everybody else has. I know that somebody's going to put broadband in there, but I'm not putting broadband in there. Somebody else will do that.
I said, I want broadband in there. Now, I didn't tell you what you couldn't put in there, no, you tell me what I can put in there. I said broadband.
I said I won't be the one that's doing it.
Brian, is there another conference call? Was it next week? I got an email on.
We got two more.
We got two more conference calls.
There are continuing conference calls. You can also go to Treasury's website where they have set up the FAQs, where you can check on things to see, like I say, there's rolling guidance that's coming out. As questions get asked, they issue guidance on that. The rule is not finalized yet. There was a 30-day comment period on the rule, but once that rule gets finalized, there will probably still continue to be interpretations of that. So we've tried to attach to this examples, this is what came from Treasury, where it talks about what you can and can't do, and that'll get scrutinized further down, but I think you see examples, it says examples of use of funds. Like, just expand on that, the courthouse, the jail cells, it's my understanding, reading the guidance and understanding and listening to the comments, that you could do that, but the expansion of the jail cells has to be specifically related somehow to COVID response. So you could put in additional cells that would allow you to isolate prisoners that came in for a future event or for current event, things like that medically related. If you put in a couple cells that were maybe, you know, if you had a holding cell that was negative pressure for contagious diseases or things like that, you could do that, but you couldn't go and just build a new jail. In fact, that was a question that was specifically asked. Can I do that? They said, no, you cannot. You have to, it has to be somehow related to COVID or a response to COVID, so that was an example.
Well, having more cells for a lesser population is related to COVID, because you could go to one person, so the cell could be the argument. A lot of these things, as you say, are in flux, and we don't really know till we ask, so this is why I put these things on the list and then start building the case for what we can do. And reducing the density of the jail population during a pandemic is certainly a, in my mind, a legitimate purpose.
You know, one of the things they said is you, you can't go out and build a new school, and you can't go out and build a brand-new jail, so, I mean, you know, to another site and building brand-new.
Yeah, and that's understandable.
Mr. Chairman, essentially what they're saying is, if you have that, if you have had that need, then you own that need, and this isn't money for you to fix your need, that if you are fixing a need that was caused by COVID or future pandemics or future medical issues, then you can fix that. But just because you haven't addressed an issue and it's all, it's been a need, you can't use this money just for that.
One of the things that I've gathered from both of the calls is, you can do about anything you want to, but you will be subject to an audit and compliance at a later date, which means that you could have to cough up the money. which means that you could have to cough up the money if they determine that was not a need, so we have to get some clarification on those things that are close, and I think that's what NACO is doing, is that when a question keeps coming up all across the country, they're asking Treasury for an interpretation of it.
Yeah, well, look, this is no different than grant writing, you have to justify what you're doing, and if you start off with improving the jail by increasing the population so you can go to lower density, we have certainly got the records to show the lower population in the jail for the past several years, so it's not as if we're building a jail because it's been overflowing with people for the last couple of years, we got a really good case.
All right, I'm still staying on the broadband train, I just think we don't need to rock the boat, I don't want to put a bunch of gray area things that have to be figured out, because I know how government works, the money's there, and, and they're gonna give it to the people that's doing things the easiest way, and all of our competition, which is our surrounding counties, are seem to be gravitating towards broadband.
On broadband, one of the things to keep in mind is the state has a deal that's been passed, Brian, is it by the House or the Senate?
Yes, it's a House bill, I think it's still ever in the Senate, that through the Department of, or the IT Department, Information Technology, that they've established a new matching program, that you can use your American Rescue Act money, and the state will kick in some of their American Rescue Act money to help you expand broadband, and, and they essentially are managing that process.
Which basically means if we needed to spend $7 million, we could spend $3.5 million, and the state would match the other $3.5 million.
There are some limits on the matching amount, but essentially, and it depends upon the tier status, and of course, once it gets over to the Senate, whether some of that gets kicked out, who knows, but there was a, there was a provision in there that talked about what your tier status was and your need, and it could, it could fluctuate on the amount they would match out it.
Okay. Did you, go ahead.
Number one on my list, since we're all talking about it, is always gonna be the item that affects the most households, and, and that's gonna be solid waste, everybody in this county, whether you live in a city or outside of the city, extraterritorial zoning, you have to use solid waste, I mean, we have to send it somewhere, and we have to send it and manage it the very best way we can, which means we need to recycle as much as we can, and with some of the ideas that are coming down, where people are, governments, small governments are managing better locally than they were in the past, they're not depending so much on what's going on with China, what's going on with the market, they're creating their own markets with recycling, I think we need to do it as soon as possible and begin planning now, because we're gonna be losing the impetus of the people to actually recycle, they're gonna, they're gonna forget how to do it, and then you've got to re-educate them, and it's, it's good for the environment, we, we have people out there, young people are saying that we're losing our planet, that we, we have to do something to save our planet, and I'm, I'm telling you right now, two things you can do to save our planet, plant a lot of stuff to cut down on carbon dioxide emissions, and recycle everything, and keep your own stuff onshore, that's it, that'll save your planet, it's two things right there, it won't cost much money, now, having said that, if there's gonna be more money coming down for broadband, if we could leverage the money we do get from the federal government, I'm, I'm not adverse to that, especially if it would build a backbone that would increase the speeds all over the county at some point, and I like the idea about the jail, so I would, I would go with, number one, recycling with, through the mega sites, because it's not as much money, it won't take so much of the initial funding, number two would be broadband, to be able to leverage, get enough money, even if we had to put a little county money up, and then leverage the rest of that through the state government, and then number three would be to build more cells in part of the jail and have a better storage facility for some of our, our county needs, so that's it for me.
Let me make a suggestion, the last public input meeting is the 28th, and so, what if we have a working session following that, sometime in the first week of July, or second week of July?
That's a good idea.
We go over the items that we've, we've heard, and start to break them down and figure out what we've gotten, what we don't have.
I have a problem with that at all, but my mind is made up, and I'm gonna talk about broadband, and, and, and every municipality in this county is gonna get some of this money, but one thing about it, if you make access to broadband for the whole county, then everybody benefits, whether you live in Bellhaven, Bath, Chalkawayne, to Aurora, everybody benefits, that's your option, whether you want to use it or not.
I don't disagree, but if we, if, going to his point, if we're spending $3.5 million, because we're gonna get matching, then you still have another, you know, $5 million to spend on other items.
Six million.
Six million, that, that we're gaining public input on how to do that, but we don't have any clear, clear ideas right now, that, that whether we can or can't.
Okay, that leads into the next one, Hood, plans for spending parameters?
Yeah, the parameters, I think we're already discussing parameters, and we've already told ourselves here tonight, you can't really do parameters until they get closer to finalizing some stuff, and we get some questions answered. I'd be willing to move on.
Did, did I say we've already received the first check? Okay, all right, okay, the internet alternatives?
Well, I got a lot of those answered tonight, thank you very much, I'm happy with the answers.
Okay, we're down to Brenda Hamilton's final report.
Yes, you have a copy of the Brenda Hamilton report in your book tonight, this is something that is somewhat difficult to talk about, when I start, when this committee formed and started the committee, I was hoping for a much better.
Yeah, I need to start all over, I was hoping for a much better answer than what we have got here, and the, the bottom line, on the first page of the report, or the second page of the report says findings, and I'm reading from, starting in the middle of a paragraph, it said, for the canid specific primers, and or sequence to determine species of canid, all the sequences aligned with the Canis lupus familiaris or domestic dog, and what, what this report says, and I don't, I'm not subscribing to the report, I'm not agreeing with the report, I'm not endorsing the report necessarily, it says that Ms. Hamilton was killed by domestic dogs, the report goes on to say, within the report, but none of the dogs that were tested were the dogs that killed her, I'll give a different story here that's gonna upset the Sheriff's Department, and quite frankly, I think we blew it on forensics, I called the lady that did this work, if you read the report, you can see that she's straining and struggling for samples, and I just don't think that we sampled the, the site properly for DNA, we didn't cordon off the site, I don't, I think that we mishandled the samples when we turned them over to the feds, who had zero jurisdiction in the matter, you see that on television, guys, it takes a judge to tell you you got federal jurisdiction, it's not because some agent walks up and says he's got it, he's taken over like they do on TV, that's not how it works, so I'm very disappointed, I'm very disappointed in the results of the report, I feel for the family, I know that in Beaufort County, I mean, I get all over the county, I get in the woods all over the county, people that work for me get in the woods all over the county, we've never had a report of a domestic pack of dogs that would try to attack somebody, that's not to say that they're maybe not here, but the results from the DNA work are very, very, very inconclusive, and that's the end of our report.
Any other comment on the report?
I think what it's saying is none of the DNA of the dogs that were sampled matched the markers and what they were using in the report, you know, I'm, I'm concerned that we do have the possibility of having wild dogs, because if you stop and think about it, when a female dog has puppies, you know, sometimes they disappear, and, you know, for somebody that has a pet, it might not have been them, but I have heard hunters talk about seeing wild dogs in the woods when they're hunting, so it's, I, I think it's the best that we can do, I think that we've exhausted and we've done what I think the public and the citizens in that area, and hopefully over the county, has asked us to do, it's not the answer that some people want, and I don't think, like Hood says, that we can draw a final conclusion on it, but anyway, this is being released, the family has been informed, and as you well know, in addition to Brenda, her husband Ray died with COVID back in December of last year, so again, this brings, I guess, the final report that we'll have on Ms. Brenda Hamilton's attack.
All right, the next one is jail door repairs.
I'm just keeping, I'm just keeping that in front of us, Christina has, has a communication in here that says she knows of no problems with the jail doors, I see the chief deputy sitting back there, I'm presuming, Charlie, you have no information on defects in jail doors, okay, so we're good to go on that.
You want to move to the, your committee, the County Police Force?
The County Police Force Committee will meet, we have a meeting this month, we haven't even talked about it, but we have a meeting this month, we'll be meeting with this, it'll be advertised, Madam Clerk, I ask you to help us with that, and we'll be, we'll be moving on with some of our work on this, so that, there's really nothing substantive to report, other than that we're still meeting and still considering.
Okay, you want to move to Board Operations?
Well, the only thing on Board Operations that I would like to present to the board, some boards allow commissioners at the end of the meeting to, to have, each commissioner to have like two minutes for a statement at the end of the meeting, and I would like to see us go to that, whereas the last thing of the meeting is, I mean, you don't have to use the two minutes, but if somebody has comments that they want to make on any issue that happened during the meeting, they can take that two minutes and do it, but a lot of boards do that.
I don't have any problems, anybody got a problem with that?
We can do that now.
Well, let's do it at the next meeting.
I'm in favor, as long as we limit that to two minutes.
I think two minutes, you can't go over there.
Yes, all right, all right, we're down to David, our closed session. Excuse me, just so that everybody else understands, tonight, we're gonna go in the conference room, so the public will be able to continue to sit here, during the closed session, excuse me, David.
A motion is needed to go into closed session under NCGS 14331811A3 to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, and for personnel matter under NCGS 14331811A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance condition, and appointment of a public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee.
Brian?
With, with the approval of the board, could we handle the personnel matter first so that we'd be able to release, release the department head?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we need a motion to go into closed session, second, motion in a second, all those in favor, raise your right hand, thank you. This time of report, there'll be no action taken after the closed session. Gentlemen, we're down now to making final changes in the budget, we can do that now, or we can defer and have our special meeting Thursday night?
I just soon do it tonight, there's not much work to be done.
All right.
But I do need, as a matter of housekeeping.
Yes.
I do need to make a motion on the two people to complete the budget, that Lloyd was talking about hiring.
Yes.
I move that we approve the hiring of those two people.
All right, we, we're actually getting into the budget changes, okay, so, do we need a motion in a second, or are we just gonna do a straw vote as we go through?
I think it was a straw vote.
Okay, so we just need a motion, so.
I guess instead of me rushing you, that we should call ourselves back in the session, or are you gonna do this?
No, we're, we're already back in, so, you want, you want to say that one more time, Hood?
I move that we hire the two positions that the tax.
We hire the two positions that the tax assessor requested in the, in the budget. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand? Did you raise?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, I thought I did.
Those opposed? All right, six one. Okay, another.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This, this position that we was talking about at corporate extension, that we were partnered with for 12,000 dollars with, with Martin County, I would like for us to reconsider that.
All right, that's, I don't have that right here in front of me, what's a dollar, Matt?
13,777.
Okay, ready to vote on that, all those in favor of that, raise your right hand, those opposed, vote was four three. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I wanna put in the $3,000 for the Beaufort County Soil and Water Conservation District, the snag and drag, for those two gentlemen that helped with their pay.
It, it's, it's not snag and drag, what you're doing is the two employees, which is Ann Williams and, is it Nathaniel Woolard?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, and that's 3,000. You don't have a second, all those in favor of that, raise your right hand, those opposed, all right, six one. Next, next person, next commissioner. John?
Two items, one is to, there, there was a proposal to add a financial specialist to the finance office, I would recommend that we add a part-time financial specialist at the amount of 36,000, and see how that works in terms of meeting the needs with the EMS oversight, and I do not support the idea of using a billing fee on the three nonprofits in order to cover that expense, because I still view that as a double taxation.
I, I thought on the billing fees, we had found out that we.
We couldn't do it anyways, that's right, I'm sorry, you're right, can't do that anyways.
Hood?
Sir. So you can't use funds from the tax districts, the legislation is not specific enough to allow you to do that, we, but if you are using, I mean, what I would say to you though is, if you are using funds from the billing piece that we're collecting, you, you probably could, that's not a tax, that's a fee for service, and if, I mean, it's like our enterprise funds, we charge back to our enterprise, in our enterprise funds, general fund usage, because they're, they're doing that whole ride, you know, they have to pay their whole ride, so I think you could charge a, take a, take something from the billing piece, because that, that's billing, that is not, those are not taxes, you, you can't use taxes, the taxes in EMS and fire are restricted taxes, and unless there's enabling legislation, lie. like occupancy tax, the occupancy tax is a restricted tax, but there's specific legislation in there that says you can use a piece of that for overhead administration. That language is not in the other restricted taxes, so the opinion from the folks at school government was you can't do that. But if it's a billing piece, you probably could.
Okay, then I'll add back in my objection to using the two percent billing fee. Let's cover it.
All right, so what, what you're recommending is a part-time position in the finance department with a limitation, limitation or budget line item of 36,000?
Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of that, raise your right hand.
What, what I would recommend is that we add the finance specialists in the finance department full-time, based on the fact that, you know, the, the finance department has just saved the county over $4 million in the refinancing. I think that when you look at the EMS and the FIRE districts, I think we're probably missing something there with all the activity on a monthly basis. I'm not saying that this person would spend all their time on EMS and FIRE, because I think that there's some work that needs to be done in emergency management. They ask for some additional help as it related to data and trying to analyze. We've been in this business long enough nay that we need to start looking at what we're going to be doing long-term. And I think that, I think we just need that extra body to be able to start spending more and more time on it, and hopefully that, that employee would be spending more time with emergency management as it, as it helps analyze the data and the numbers. But when you think about it, our two most important, this is not to say every department's not important, but on the revenue side, that comes from our tax assessor's office, and we just agreed to hire two additional employees to do that. And then when you look at the finance department, that's probably our second most important, because they're the ones that are controlling the money coming in, making sure that it's right, and also on, on the money that's going out. Very, very important, and it gives us the management decision, manage, the data and the numbers for us to make better management decisions as a group. So, I'm going to recommend that we add that person in the finance department.
What's, what's the cost?
The cost that I have was 71,522. So, although, was that the right number? Okay, all those in...
Discussion.
Well, you're going to get a chance to vote. I mean, this is an upper dan thing. If we don't get four, it doesn't, doesn't pass.
Well, I'm trying to sway some of the other people not to vote that way. You don't know what we're doing.
That's right. It's a vote upper dan. So, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, it failed. So, see, you didn't have to say anything. Okay? All right, who's next?
I won't go ahead, John. I'm going to recommend that we reduce the fund balance by an amount equal to 1% of the tax rate and transfer those funds to the general revenue. And I understand that we're funding a reoccurring reduction in revenue with fund balance, but the fund balance is well over the 35% that the target. While we can't forecast the future, it seems to me, it appears to be highly unlikely that that fund balance is going to be in major jeopardy. Now, having said that, I know we had a recommendation to do 3%.
Three cents.
Three cents, well, three cents before. I just think that's probably beyond what's responsible in terms of knowing what the future's going to hold. So, we need to grow the tax base in this county. We need to be able to keep the young people here. We need to be able to allow business to flourish, and we need to take actions that'll better match the output from our educational system with the needs of industry. So, I'm recommending we go one, one cent.
I have a question. Is that, is that one cent to augment the increases that have been made from the manager's flat budget?
Augment.
To, to balance out?
Well, the one, one cent balance out would come from transferring one cent from, the equivalent of one cent from fund balance to the general fund.
Yeah, to, to balance out the initial expenditures, which are over and above the manager's flat budget that he presented to us.
That's separate. That's a separate issue from this.
No, it's the same thing. I mean, you're the accountant, but I understand it's all in the same pot.
It isn't, well, it all is in the same fund balance.
But is this a tax reduction?
It's a tax reduction.
In other words, instead of 63 and a half cents or whatever it is, our base would go to 62 and a half.
Yes.
Is that right?
Correct.
Brian, you want that number? You want the number?
What did?
The one cent?
Yeah. Six oh one five forty-three.
Okay.
So, and, and I think you mentioned that we would take that and you would use fund balance to offset that.
Correct.
That's what he's saying. Okay, just want to make sure, because...
Did he say that was a reoccurring expense?
Correct.
So, what you're going to do next, you raise taxes?
Well, you can.
Well, yeah, you may have to, but my...
You got plenty of money.
My forecast is, my, my look at this thing is that's not going to happen.
Well, gentlemen, we, we, we keep talking about solid waste, solid waste, solid waste. We talking about a storage building, and we pull that out. I mean, all we're doing is reducing the fund balance when we know we're going to spend the, you know, we're going to spend on the storage building, the estimate's 1.2, who knows what that's going to be? That's a need. On the mega sites, we've heard things like two and a half million per site, so I mean, that's fine. It just does not make sense. I mean, we could, we could pull that down, you know, five, five percentage points, just, just handling capital funds. I, I think instead of reducing the taxes, we ought to be putting, we ought to have a capital fund using the same amount of money, 500 or 600,000, put it in a capital fund for solid waste.
Mr. Chairman?
I mean, we're going to be spending that.
Since you're speaking, can I speak?
Yes.
Okay, we have a different philosophy. While I, I feel like a three percent, three cent per hundred is warranted and merited in this difficult year for so many people in Beaufort County. Next year will be a different year. We probably won't be able to afford to do it next year. Next year could be an abomination for all we know. And I don't know, nobody knows what next year's going to bring. Nobody knew the pandemonium from the pandemic was going to occur. But I, I will embrace Commissioner Rebholz's one cent, because it's a help to the people of this county now. It is better that we starve government of money and make government run more efficient and let people keep their own money in their own pockets. By God, they spend it a lot better than we do.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right, so we got the, the decrease.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To the extent that this may even fail, I propose that we spend an additional three cent in addition to Commissioner Rebholz's past one cent allocations to people of Beaufort County this year, this one year, not a reoccurring expense. I make a motion that we allocate three cent of the fund balance, which will be a total of four cent, back to the people of Beaufort County this year.
Let me speak on that.
Yes, it is, yes, it is politics. It's politics, and this is a political body. You guys do politics, we do it too.
All right, go ahead.
Let me speak on that. Look, guys, you got $34 million sitting there. With, if you did the whole four cents, you're talking about two and a half million dollars. It's peanuts. Why are you as politicians so greedy that you don't want to give it back to the people? It's very easy if you need it to take it back next year. So, why not let the people have their money as Commissioner Death reset? They spend it much better than we do. I mean, you got a pile of money there. Why are you so greedy? Y'all just doing things, you're right, just, just for the sake of, of politics. Y'all know that we live in Hurricane Alice, and every time something happens here, we have to pay upfront and be reimbursed later. So, y'all can just do all this stuff because some of y'all will be up for reelection next year? That's fine, but I, I don't, I don't believe in this foolishness. We're going, we're going, we're going to give you a break this year, then we're going to turn around next year, and we're going to take it back double. That's exactly what you're going to do.
And we're not going to solve solid waste. We're just going to keep right on kicking that down, just like, just like Hood's done for the last 20-some years, just like he has the last 20-some years. All right, well, you're not going to vote for the budget anyway. You're not going to vote for it, I guarantee you won't. I got a $100 deal that says you won't vote in favor of the budget.
I'll, I'll vote for $100 right now if we pass this, this four cent, he'll vote for the budget.
Yeah, if you give people a tax reduction, I will vote for it.
Okay, the, the, what Stan is saying is to reduce the taxes another three cents.
No, it's three cents.
All right, so all those in favor of that, raise your right hand. All right, all those opposed? All right, is there, is there, is there any other item in the budget that you want to increase or take away?
Well, there's a lot I want to take away, but it's useless, so I'm ready to move on to my next.
Okay, I...
Issue.
Is it related to the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, well, go ahead.
All right, go, go to the end of the proposed budget, the very last page in there, section 25, and it says, transfers between functional areas must be reported to the board at their next regular, they scheduled meeting. Only the board may transfer money between funds and the functional operating areas. Now, my question to the finance officer is, within the cost accounting code, those 15, not, those 15 digits that are there, where, where does functional areas end? What digit is, is the functional areas end on?
The functional areas don't have anything to do with our account structure. It is, it all goes back to our budget ordinance, which you all have a copy of on...
But I thought, I thought that was line item, and if it's line item, it must go to the cost accounting.
This is the legal document that the board approves. So, when we say functional area, if you look at page one, human services is a functional area, community services is a functional area, education is a functional area, and so forth.
All right, what, what are those 15 digits that I'm talking about on the line item accounts?
It's an account number.
Okay, what do the first six digits represent?
The first, okay, I responded by email, but I can review it with you.
No, you sent me a list of nothing. That was not a response for what I asked for.
Yes, you did.
No, no, you, I asked...
Can you show it to you?
I asked, well, unless it's a different email than I checked at 4:30.
That list is on your desk.
It's a list of accounts.
That's what you asked for.
No, it wasn't. Read, you need to read my email. What my email said was that in our cost numbering system with 15 digits, the, what do the first four numbers represent?
So, the first two to three numbers are the funds.
Well, I, I looked at 4:30 this afternoon. What I'm, what I'm going to with this, what I'm going for with this is, if you, if we're only allowed, if, if department heads and everybody has discretion to control the budget in these seven or eight major functional items that are listed here, that is still no control of the budget. I want to go out to about digit number seven, and then those transfers are reported to the board. I want to move that from these functional items to like digit number seven in the costing code. That is the items that need to be reported to the board that we need to know about, because right now, we don't know anything about anything.
So, that's your recommendation. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed? Nay. Are you able to redo the budget ordinance, or do you want us to defer our meeting until Thursday with the changes that have been made?
Mr. Chairman, to be, to make sure that we have everything right, we've got to rerun some numbers, we got to make sure we do it right. Thursday would work best for us. I mean, otherwise, we're going to be here a couple of hours.
That, that's no problem. That's no problem. So, we will have our special meeting. I think someone said in the paper that it said it would be tomorrow night. It's actually Thursday night. Is the time 5:30? Is that agreeable?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The document that he has prepared here tonight, is it possible that we could vote on it? I mean, if I make a motion to approve the budget, that, but still too early?
What you have, the budget ordinance that you have in front of you now, the draft ordinance, is based on where you were at the last budget meeting. All these changes that you did tonight are not reflected in that document, so if, and you can't vote on something without it being on paper. We have to give you that document.
Okay, I'm ready to take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second. I'll second. All those in favor, raise your right hand.